I guess, who else is supposed to be? George is supposed to be here.
Bernice is.
Is Harland joining in?
No, he's not.
Okay, so we're just waiting for George.
I think Bernice said she was gonna be there.
Bernice is here.
Yeah, I'm here.
Oh, okay.
You don't recognize her because the cat hasn't walked across the table yet.
No, just the view I had just had one section, didn't have everybody.
George is here.
Okay.
Oh, good. All right. So if Karen, can we begin?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Do we have a court reporter?
We should. Maybe she's still, is she out there and participants? I don't know if it's Lisa Bradley again or not.
She's not listed. I have a Susan bill.
Let's see. Oh, let's see.
Lauren Hoffman, is that it?
Are we broadcasting, Claudia?
We're on now.
We're on now. Okay, well, let's ask then if we have a core reporter out there, if she could raise her hand, make herself known.
Hi, George. Are we waiting to see if we're going to have a court reporter?
Yeah, that's what we're doing, but.
Okay, well, whenever you feel appropriate, we'll start.
We see.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to just make one announcement. An application for.
We're ready.
Hillside that was earlier, was on the agenda, but it's been pulled. They're gonna renotice and come back at another date.
Which one is that?
It was Hillside. Claudia, I don't have the exact address, but it's been pulled from the agenda, but.
It's a duplicate. Oh, go ahead. Sorry.
That was the address I.
Twenty-seven Hillside.
Thank you, Chris. So it'll be rescheduled and renoticed. But notice, so that's why I'm making the announcement.
Okay.
All right, well, it looks like we have our core reporter. Claudia, has she been elevated to panelist or?
Yes.
Okay.
She's in the panelists.
All right, then. We're ready to begin.
Okay. This is the regular meeting of the Princeton Zoning Board of Adjustment being held electronically by Zoom on April twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-one, and seven thirty. Pursuant to Section thirteen of the Open Publics Meeting Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this meeting has been given by predominantly posting the sunshine notice of the Princeton Zoning Board of Adjustment. Such notice has been placed on the official bulletin board at the municipal complex and by transmitting and by transmitting a copy of the notice to the Princeton Packet Town Topics, The Times of Trenton, The Trentonian, and by filing a copy with the Clerk of Princeton on April twenty-third, twenty twenty-one, and has been posted on the municipal website, wwwprincetonnj.gov/meetings. Pursuant to Executive Order one oh seven, due to the state of emergency in New Jersey regarding COVID-nineteen coronavirus, notice that during the declared state of emergency, all regular and special meetings of the Princeton Zoning Board of Adjustment will be held electronically via Zoom, was transmitted to the Princeton Packet Town Topics and The Times, and was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on the twenty-fourth day of April twenty twenty. Such notices have been placed on the official bulletin board at the municipal complex and on the Princeton website and are being maintained throughout the year, and by transmitting a copy of same to the Princeton Packet Town Topics, The Times of The Times, Trentonian, Comcast Media, and by filing a copy thereof with the Clerk of Princeton, notices have been placed on all window doors of municipal complex. Okay, that is the opening statement. Claudia, can you call the role, please?
Ms. Coulson? Mr. Davich?
Here.
Mr. Floyd?
Here.
Mr. Schreiber?
Here.
Mr. Tenenbaum? Mr. Vavani?
Here.
Ms. Chen?
Here.
Mr. Stein?
Here.
Thank you. Mr. Cohen, I'm sorry.
Here. That's okay. Okay. The minutes are going to be deferred to the next, the next meeting. So we're not gonna review and discuss the minutes tonight. We have two resolutions next. The first one is eight Florence Lane, block sixty-seven oh five, lot nineteen, in the R-two zone. We, there were copies of the resolution in your packet. I hope everybody's had the opportunity to look at it. Are there any questions, clarifications, or comments on the on the resolution? If not, if someone would like to make a motion?
Michael Floyd, I'd like to move approval.
I'll second that. James Davids.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Davids?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, our second resolution is file number Z twenty-one dash oh oh eight. Forty-seven West Scott Road, block three point oh one, lot ten. Again, these, the resolution's in your packet, and if there are no questions, if somebody would like to make a motion?
Steve and Schreiber are so moved.
Okay, thank you.
I'll second that.
I'll second it.
Do you want for it?
Sure.
Okay, Mr. Davids?
Here.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, bear with me, I have to go back here. Okay, our, and our next, our next item, we have three hearings tonight. The first one is thirty-five to thirty-seven South Harrison Street, block fifty-two point oh one, lot one oh two in the R-three zone. This is a little unusual. Derek, would you like to give us an opening statement on this?
Well, this is an appeal from a decision by the HPC to approve a second unit at thirty-five dash thirty-seven South Harrison Street. They appealed, appeared before the HPC on January twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-one, and the Wampoles are appealing that decision. And I'm gonna let them go through their application, appeal, presentation. They had some issues with notice, and there's an issue with a tree and some other issues, but I think they can explain those. The board's charges to basically determine whether the Historic Preservation Commission acted accordingly when they made their decision at the hearing, so.
Okay.
We have Julie Cappi here.
Yeah, Steve, just one question, since you have HPC representatives here, I don't know if it will be facilitate the appeal to hear from the HPC representatives first, or whether you want the objector to go through their points?
Well, I guess, I guess, well, do you have, do you have anything you want to mention on this, Karen, before we start?
Uh, no, just that I think it might be helpful to have the HPC go through the, the application that's being appealed. Mr. Wampole raised issues about removal of a porch and a chimney and what happened there, and, you know, was notice given, et cetera. So it might be helpful to have HPC go through this. Then, Mr. Wampole can respond to that and, and go through his points as well.
Okay, that's, I, I agree, I agree. Elizabeth, Elizabeth Kim, our Historic Preservation Officer, do you want to be, you want to give your evaluation of this?
Elizabeth, what I'll do is swear you in, as well as Julie, I see the chairman of HPC. We'll swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful.
I do.
I do.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna defer to the HPC chair at this point for her to discuss that, and then I'll be available for questions.
Okay.
That's acceptable.
Oh, well, good evening. I was gonna rely on Elizabeth to go over the resolution, but um, I think the first thing I should do is read a memo that I received from Ed Schmear.
Excuse me, one second, Julia. Karen, does Julia have to be sworn in?
I did. I just swore, I swore them both in.
Oh, you swore them both. I'm sorry. Go ahead, please, continue.
I did.
Okay, so I just want to go over this memo we got from our legal, our attorney for the HPC, so that we know what the HPC lawyer's opinion is, since he's not here. So, uh, this is from Ed Schmear dated April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one. An appeal has been filed to the HPC approval on January twentieth, twenty twenty-one, granting historic preservation plan approval for the construction of a duplex unit at thirty-five thirty-seven South Harrison Street. It is my understanding that a part of this appeal questions whether or not administrative approval by you and by HPC Officer Elizabeth Kim could have been granted for the removal of a chimney on the existing house on the property, which was in disrepair and a safety issue, and the removal of a vestibule on the existing house. The removal of the chimney and vestibule were not part of the above referenced application to HPC. That application was separate from administrative approvals granted to the existing house. The application considered by HPC on January twentieth, twenty twenty-one was solely for the construction of the new duplex unit. I am an above, I am of the opinion that you and HPC officer, the officer did not, did have authority when dealing with the existing house before the duplex application was filed to authorize the removal of the chimney and the vestibule. The Princeton Historic Preservation Ordinance has been adopted as authorized by the New Jersey Municipal Landlaw Use Law, and that gives the code section forty dash fifty-five D dash one 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 does permit the chairperson of a local Historic Preservation Commission to act administratively in the place of the full commission when reviewing improvements or renovations to an existing structure in an historic preservation district, in my opinion. The Princeton Ordinance reflects this authority in section ten B, three eighty, part two. This section of the Princeton HPC Ordinance provides that if the Historic Preservation Officer determines that the preservation plan for the reconstruction for improvement of a structure within an historic district will not have significant impact, the Historic Preservation Officer can recommend to you as the chair administrative approval of the restoration or repair plan. It is my understanding, in the context of the Brown property, that the Historic Preservation Officer did recommend that in the context of stabilizing and repairing the existing home on the property, that the chimney, which created a safety hazard, and the vestibule at the porch to be removed to appropriately facilitate the repair and restoration of the existing house on the property. The removal of these features on the existing house, which are unrelated to the HPC approval application for the new duplex unit, did not require noticing under section ten B, three ninety, for demolition. So that's what Ed wrote on the twenty-seventh. Elizabeth, did you want to add anything?
Um, just to clarify, as, as Julie had said, the applicant actually came before HPC initially to do improvements on the existing house prior to any discussion about a duplex or anything like that. She was trying to improve the existing historic house. And then after, and which is at that time where we had given her administrative approval for the porch and the chimney and the removal of the vestibule. And then she had come back afterwards specifically for the duplex. And the, and it was really just for that new addition that the HPC had reviewed. It didn't have anything to do with the restoration of the original house.
So Elizabeth, just for clarification for the board, you're saying that the application which you heard on January twentieth, twenty twenty-one, did not have any demolition component to it, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And then I don't know if you want to speak to the, the objectors also raised concerns about a tree, very old tree, on the property. My understanding is the resolution that HPC adopted didn't reference the tree because you didn't, that was not before you, is that correct?
That's correct. There was no discussion about a tree. The tree was not on their property. They were not, the attention was not brought that there was this tree that would impact the, the health of the tree or even the, the new development. So typically, an applicant is not required to identify trees that are not on their property. So the HPC would not have been aware of that.
Okay. Well, now I see we, we, I don't know if the board wants to hear from Mr. Wampole now, so he can respond. I see we also have Mr. Tar here. He's here tonight for the property owner.
Well, I think, yeah, I think let's hear from the property owner first, and then we, I believe, hear from the neighbor.
Okay.
Question, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
What about, what about the alleged basis of appeal regarding improper notice? Did Ed speak to, did Ed Schmear speak to that? Or is someone going to speak to it?
Hey, Michael, the, um, the last paragraph of the memo says the removal of the features on the existing house, which are unrelated to the HPC approval application for the new duplex, did not require noticing under section ten B, three ninety, for demolition.
Okay, I, I guess I read their appeal also to cover improper notice on the meeting itself.
Oh, that's, that's a good point, Michael, and that's.
Which is, which, which is, you know, you can explain to me, but I thought HPC doesn't require notice to neighbors. And then there's second assertion that there was a HPC, Chris Tar neighbor side agreement that said it was gonna be noticed. So I, I think Ed Schmear needs, or someone needs to speak to those.
So, Michael, I can address that. So you are correct. There is no noticing required with Historic Preservation Meetings unless there is demolition, and there actually is a lengthy process for that. But again, this was not required to, to require that, or, you know, fall under that, that section. And as far as the, the conversation between Chris Tar and the neighbor, we were not aware of that conversation, you know, prior to our meeting, and for the HPC reviewing the application and making their determination on the project. So I think that I will leave that to, to Mr. Tar and the neighbors to discuss that, but HPC was not aware of the conversation.
Okay.
Would you like us to, we were the appellant. Would you like us to speak to that notice issue?
It's okay with the applicant to have you do that. Hopefully, you're gonna speak to the, about the tree. That's really the only remaining legal issue.
Right. At first, I wanted to talk about the notice issue that we've been discussing here, Ms. Cappizoli, and the, the memo from Ed Schmear. I, I, I'm afraid that Mr. Schmear completely misconstrued the argument that we're making here. As to Mr. Schmear's memo that Ms. Cappizoli just read, we would agree with it in its entirety. And this is not about the demolition of the chimney or of the vestibule. There are two major demolitions that were at issue here. Now, the reason demolition is important is because under section, subsection five B of section ten B, three eighty of the code, if, if a HPC matter involves demolition or moving of a structure, all owners of property located within two hundred feet of the lot that is the subject of the hearing are required to be noticed. Now, in this case, on the application itself, it calls for the removal of the driveway. So that's the, the major argument here is that the plan does, in fact, call for a demolition. Now, I think that it would be appropriate here to note that, that, that the term demolition is defined under the ordinance. Demolition is defined by the ordinance to mean, quote, "to partially or completely take down a structure or a part thereof." In turn, the term "structure" is defined by the ordinance as, quote, "a combination of materials to form a construction for occupancy, use, or ornamentation, whether installed on, above, or, or under the surface." So it is clear that a, that a structure on the surface, such as a driveway, is a, is a structure, and to remove it is quite clearly a demolition. And I don't think any of these facts, I mean, maybe someone may disagree about the application of the law to these facts, but I don't think any of these facts are in dispute as to what the plan calls for. Um, I, I also wanted to take note that the demolition of the historic driveway is not just a technical matter. It's a very consequential destructive feature of this proposed redevelopment. By demolishing the historic driveway, the developer renders useless the existing historic detached garage that currently serves the historic home. So the neutralization of the existing garage provides the developer with the pretext for claiming the necessity of two attached garages that are visible from the street, which of, in and of itself goes against historic preservation criteria. The unnecessary creation of these two side-by-side garages is not only a historical, but against, is not in accordance with three eighty-six of the code. But in any event, the point here is that there is a driveway demolition that is proposed by the plan. In addition, the, the applicant, Ms. Brown, did, they did demolish the entire facade of the house. Not the front vestibule. That's not what we're talking about. We're not talking about the chimney. We're talking about the entire front porch. All of the front siding of the house was demolished. So, again, Mr. Schmear's, he's addressing an issue that's not an issue in this case. So that's our argument with respect to that notice issue. I don't know if you'd like us to move on to the other one, or?
There is another issue with regard to notice. Specifically.
Well, I, you know, Miss, I, I, I must apologize. I should have sworn you in. I'm gonna swear you both in now. Mr. and Mrs. Wampole, do you swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
We do.
Thank you. Thank you.
And has been.
Fair enough. Fair enough.
Would you like us to speak to the other notice issue?
Yes, please.
So the other notice issue that we were referring to before was concerning an agreement between Mr. Tar and ourselves, and myself. There were two project review meetings, one in June and one in September. I attended both of these meetings in hopes of getting my input in and information in about this tree that we've been talking about. In bo, on both occasions of both of these hearings, the Historic Review Board requested that, that, that Ms. Brown speak with us before presenting another proposal to the Historic Review Board. On the, in the September meeting, Mr. Tar agreed that he would do so. That was September twenty-first. On September twenty-second, I followed up by putting, sending an email and writing confirming that we would be ready to speak with him and to listen to the proposal before submitted to the Historic Preservation Review Board. He wrote back, you know, acknowledging that we, he'd hope we'd have a productive discussion in the future. And I never heard from him again and until, and never heard from him again. And we never got notice of the proposal or of the hearing. And we were, we were promised, we should have gotten proposal, here, notice pursuant to the agreement. And the third, the, the third notice issue is, you know, I, I tried to find that all matters need to be given ten-day notice to the public. I, I looked for notice. I, you know, did not find it within, you know, a ten-day period. I cannot say whether it was where it was posted. The, the information online only shows that it was first, the agenda was first uploaded on January twenty-second. The meeting was on the. The meeting was on the 25th. There should have been notice given by the 15th. If notice was given, then I would certainly withdraw this one ground. But I have no proof that notice was given.
Did we, did we have, looking back, was there notice?
I believe there was not notice given in 10 days in advance. But it's hard for me to prove a negative. I just, I know, I have not seen any evidence. I know that the clerk received it on the 22nd of January, which is not, you know, the key date would have been January 15th. I know that it was sent to the newspapers on the 22nd of January, but I don't have any evidence that anything was, any notice was given prior to that day.
So, I mean, just so you know that we are required to do it 10 days before. I would have to look back, but I'm sure that if it wasn't, that we would have had to postpone the meeting. That is the protocol. But we always ensure that it's done 10 days. Oftentimes, there is a revision, so the, you know, the clerk's office, the newspaper always gets an update if there's a revision to the agenda. But we have never missed it, the 10-day notice.
So those are our three grounds for saying, for, on the notice issue. And I'm hoping that this matter can be disposed of in one of those three grounds.
Otherwise, I'm prepared to speak on the tree, but I thought the, I thought that the plan was that we were going to let the property owner speak next, so we'll pause.
I'd be inclined to go ahead and explain about the tree so we can deal with it all at once if you're prepared.
Certainly.
Okay, I'm Martha Reinhardt. Good evening, everybody. I'm going to read. So we are appealing the decision taken by the Historic Preservation Commission at their February meeting concerning the property. We live next door and the property is, that is the subject of Brooke Brown's renovation and development application. We live directly next door. Since we first heard about the project in May of 2020, our chief concern has been the safeguarding of our large historic sycamore tree that sits near the property line between the two houses. We have submitted several documents that show how Ms. Brown's project, as proposed at the HPC meeting in January, would adversely impact our tree. Unfortunately, the HPC did not have before it in January the information necessary to make a meaningful decision about the impact of the redevelopment plan on the historic tree. But nor did the HPC take into account the impact of the shade tree ordinance, nor did the HPC invite or receive advice from the town arborist, Mr. Sapooter. Mr. Wells, a certified tree expert who we hired, has verified for us that the proposed plan will absolutely adversely affect our tree. With a diameter of 52 inches, the sycamore is one of the 10 largest sycamore trees in the state. And with Mr. Wells' help, we have submitted our tree for inclusion on the list of historic and significant trees of New Jersey. We were pleased to see that since our notice of appeal was made, Ms. Brown has made a significant change to her plan. In short, she has agreed to change the plan approved by the HPC on February 22nd by moving the front facade of the proposed duplex back approximately seven feet. While Ms. Brown's concession is undoubtedly meaningful, for sure, as it could provide the tree the bare minimum of protection, we do not believe that it goes far enough either in protecting the tree or in promoting the cause of historic preservation. We request that the zoning board remand this matter back to the HPC for rehearing on Ms. Brown's revised plan, which they have not yet spoken to. The plan has changed since you all approved it. That you remand it back, sorry, remand the matter back to the HPC for rehearing on Ms. Brown's revised plan and that at such hearing, rehearing, any member of the public may raise for HPC's consideration any issue that could properly have been raised at the original January 25th meeting. If the board is not inclined to act on that request now.
Well, I guess that's, that's our question is the fact that the plan has now, since Ms. Brown has graciously agreed to change her plan and it appears in response to our tree report, the plan has now changed and it's not the plan that was in fact approved. So we were wondering if it would not be on that basis appropriate simply to move it back to HPC now to approve the revised plan.
The rest of our points of appeal are primarily historic preservation issues that the proposal, Ms. Brown's plan, did not address or did not address in a way that we felt was appropriate for historic designation.
And there are other, so, so, so if I may interpret what I think Mrs. Brown's proposal was, was to move it back so that there's not a 25-foot, so it's outside a 25-foot radius from the tree, which the tree report said that that is the bare minimum. There cannot be any construction activity whatsoever within that 25 feet. Needs to be fenced off. But the, the actual tree protection zone is a 40-foot radius. And while that is not, we're not suggesting that there can't be any activity in that radius. It should be minimized. And, and so there are ancillary issues such as in Mrs., in the approval given by HPC, for instance, the new driveway is to be asphalted. There should be questions raised as to whether that is appropriate. Would it not be, that driveway is within the 40-foot radius? Would it not be more appropriate to have permeable rather than impermeable surface? There are, and there are a number of issues. Is there a way to deal with this so that the canopy of the tree will, she's, she has proposed a three-story house. So the canopy of the tree is going to be in her house and no consideration has been given to that. And so I think it's appropriate for the, for HPC to look at the revised plan in light of their new information about the issues.
Further, the house as the new construction house has nine-foot ceilings. No house in Jugtown. No house in Jugtown. Barely has eight foot. Most, much of my house does not. The other thing is that it's three stories. Also, no house in Jugtown. No house in the area is three stories. So we are proposing not to say, don't make it three stories. We're not proposing no attached garage. We're proposing something different, which we would love to present. We would love to speak to Ms. Brown about this. But that has never been an option, even though it was twice promised. And Historic Preservation after the first meeting said, so did you speak to the neighbors? And they said, no, no, we thought we'd come to you. And then after the second meeting, are you going to talk to the neighbors? And then it didn't happen. So we're feeling muted because we are not opposed to the duplex. We're not. But we are opposed to doing anything that will harm my tree or that will really alter the streetscape so significantly that it no longer looks like the house belongs in Jugtown.
Elizabeth, what do you think about that? Julie? Comments?
Well, I think we should give Chris Tar a chance because we only, I mean, we're neutral about this. So I don't think the applicant has been able to speak yet.
Okay, Chris, do you want to speak?
Sure. The only legal issue remaining insofar as Ms. Brown is concerned is compliance with this new ordinance amendment about the tree drip lines. And I have three slides that I'd like to show you that just indicate what the HPC approved and what her willingness to move the house back. And then Mr. Wells did a report. I acknowledge Bob Wells is an expert with respect to trees. I've used him as an expert at the Theological Seminary. I'd like to put up on the screen the 10 recommendations he made, all of the relevant ones of which Ms. Brown would agree to comply with. So if this board is prepared to assume that this is an appeal from the HPC, it's very clear that neither Ms. Brown nor the HPC was aware of or took any involvement with respect to that, that new tree ordinance amendment. And, and yet, the Wampolds very kindly did a report. It has recommendations and we'd like to go through those with you to satisfy you that they've, they've met those recommendations and otherwise.
I'm wondering, I'm wondering, is it more appropriate now for the Wampolds and Ms. Brown to talk and try to come to a resolution?
Mr. Chairman, I did say at the, they, she's been there five times. It's a HPC. With, and at one of those meetings, I said she'd talk with them. What I leave, I leave unsaid here and I'm reluctant to say it. But at that same hearing, Wampold and Reinhardt raised a series of, made a series of statements to the effect that the owner, the prior owner of the property had put restrictions on it and others had such a manner that a duplex could not be built.
No.
Miss, excuse me, excuse me.
Well, wait, wait, hold on one second. Hold on one second. If, if, you know, we're, we're.
There's not to be a discussion. There's, there's some bad blood that I think unfortunately arose here. Ms. Brown went to the hearing in January without me, didn't, I was not present. And she proceeded to appear before the board in that way. So I'd like to show those three slides if I could to give you an understanding.
The only thing, the only thing I'm concerned about it, we, we do have other cases tonight. And, and I'm wondering, and Karen, you know, I'd like your counsel on this. Do you think it's more appropriate to try to, try to let the, both the neighbors and the applicant talk and then come back? And then possibly discuss this with, if they can't come to an agreement or if, if, if it has to go back to HPC, then at least we'll know about it then rather than trying to hash it out here. What do you think?
Well, it seems to me from what Mr. Tar has explained that it doesn't sound like it would be productive to carry this only to allow the neighbors to talk because it takes two sides to talk. So if there are bad feelings, then there are. I did though want to take a step back because remember tonight would.
Excuse one second, please. Go ahead, Karen, please finish.
What's being appealed tonight is the record before the HPC. So they didn't know about the tree. They've explained they normally don't require an applicant to identify a tree off-site. That's not to say that they wouldn't have asked questions about it if they were aware of it. Perhaps they would have made more inquiry. The jurisdiction for the tree, I think, would fall to the arborist because this is coming up under a separate ordinance, an amendment to the shade tree regulations. Tonight, because the objectors have raised it, the town has the arborist here. But ultimately, it's his call. I mean, it has to still pass his review. I'm assuming that any application for construction, even without variances, still has to go through pre-approvals. One of them would be the arborist takes a look at it and says, looks okay, or I have questions. And I'm making that assumption and Derek or Jim, you can correct me if that's not correct.
You're correct.
Okay. So it seems to me that what, what we have tonight is from, from the perspective of the board, in order to comply, and when I, let me just ask the arborist, do you have an application yet? An application hasn't come to you yet for review, correct?
No, when it goes under the land use review in the engineering department, that's when it would be submitted in the comments back to the applicant.
Okay. So it seems to me that the bigger issue right now is in order to comply, does the building need to be moved? Is there going to be a change made to the proposed building that HPC reviewed? And what is HPC's position on that? Would it normally have to come back to you or not? Because I think the owner is trying now to address whatever's been raised about the tree, trying to say, fine, I'm willing to comply. We do have the arborist here tonight. I don't know if he's looked at Mr. Wells' report. I don't know if he is in a position to speak to it or wants to speak to it. But it just seems to me that the bigger issue might be, does HPC need to see it again? So if HPC says, no, that's not our, our practice, it won't come back to us again? All right, then at, at this juncture, I guess we would need to take a good look to say, well, then what is the record that's being appealed to you now? Because there was nothing about a tree. And that's because HPC didn't know about it. So I think just as a matter of process, and I don't know who wants to respond, Julie or Elizabeth, would normally, if I came to you and got an approval and then I changed something, would I come back to you?
It would depend on the severity of the change. Sometimes it would go back to the full commission. Other times it would be administratively reviewed. And the administrative review again would be just the HPC chair and myself.
Okay. Well, Mr. Tar, I don't know if you want to go through the slides now to show what your client was willing to do or how much of a change she would need to make if she wanted to accommodate all these recommendations from Bob Wells.
Excuse me, one second, Chris. I'm sorry. Elizabeth, did the applicant, did Ms. Brooks come back to you with this change in the plan?
It was not sent to us.
It was not formally, it was not formally presented to the board?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Chris, please continue. Sorry.
So again, the effort on Ms. Brown's part is to comply with the recommendations made by Mr. Wells to move the house back seven feet and to take other steps to protect the tree roots. Again, she's been to HPC five times. The question is, one, of fairness, under all the circumstances, if she's agreed to comply with the recommendations from Mr. Wells, isn't it within this board's jurisdiction to say, okay, the HPC approval could be amended in an amelioratory fashion to, to help protect the tree? But that was only because it's just nobody brought it up at the HPC. That's the question. Are you willing to take that issue up and amend the approval from the HPC in that way?
Or alternatively, there's still an application that has to come to the town for your client to build, right?
And, and if, and if it's rejected because the house is too close to the tree, then we have to go back, we've taken another step forward and we have to take two steps back. So the question is, should we, is this, could this board deal with this tonight? Or are you going to send this back to HPC? But I hesitate to proceed through the building function only to have Taylor or somebody else have to say, well, it's, it doesn't comply with the ordinance. We're trying to accommodate the request, the very recommendation that Mr. Wells made to leave a 25-foot radius circle from the, from the tree on our property. We've accommodated that request. So if, it's up to this board. If, if, if you don't feel that you want to move ahead on that, then there's no point in wasting your time. But if you would like to look at the slides and see what those recommendations were, I'd like to present them.
Let me just ask the municipal arborist, have you had a chance to look at any of this? I know you don't have an application yet. Have you had a chance to look at Mr. Wells' report?
Yes, most certainly have. The recommendations and his bullet points are more than fair in regards to, in regards to preserving that tree. One question, or one point I would like to add is our council who approved the ordinance has found a four-foot wooden snow fence sufficient for tree protection, where Mr. Wells' report, he indicates a chain-linked fence. So I just want. So I just want to make that clear. Once tree protection goes up, that a four foot wooden snow fence is sufficient. The, the bullet points that he indicates or that he recommends in regards to air spading, mulch, wood chips within that drip line in the event that traction, construction does need to occur within that drip line. He's, he's spot on with his, with his assessment. And that's exactly what I would be looking for in this, in the application.
And not to jump ahead, but we've agreed to all that, so.
Why don't you give us the slides, Mr. Tar?
Okay, we've got share screen. I don't have the slides. I don't find, bear with me a minute.
You have share screen?
Yeah, it's on. But it's, it, Claudia, it's Brown Harrison duplex A1 in the deck that you have. Can you put that up for me?
Give me one second.
Wait one second. There it is. So this is the slide that shows the site plan as was approved by HPC. So to orient you, Harrison Street is at the bottom. The public park is on the right and to the rear of the property. And the Wampold Reinhardt House is to the left where the, it says zoning chart on that side of the, of the drawing. As you look at it, you see that it's, to the right hand side, it's marked existing house. And that is the old historic home. To the left and the middle, it says new duplex and new garage. Now, this scales to the, to the fact that from the Harrison Street property line to the corner of the house at the, on the extreme left hand side is 23 feet. 23 feet. The tree is, is just off on the, the Wampold Reinhardt property at the, just off, over, across our property line along Harrison Street. So again, it's important that you see the rear setback line is, is right behind where it says new patio. You can see that that dashed line going across is the far back on the property as, as could be built. And so it, we already butt that line with the new patio where the house is set at 23 feet back. Claudia, if you could help me and go to A7.
Thank you, one second.
All right, scroll down, scroll down, there we go. The, we, we've mentioned Mr. Wells' report and I'm going to quote him. He says, "An essential first step in protecting the large tree was to create a circle with a radius of 25 feet measured from our property corner inward on our lot." And you see that 25 foot circle marked here in the lower left hand corner. The house was 23 feet back. Ms. Brown has agreed to move it 30 feet back or an additional seven feet from where it was. And not only to keep that corner at the 25 feet, but to move it five feet further back than the 25 foot radius to have five feet of safety or protection from the fenced area. Otherwise, you look at the back of the house at the rear setback line and the house now approaches that line very closely. And then, and the patio has been removed so as not to encroach into the rear yard. So the house is pushed back as far as it can without getting a variance. And frankly, there's a public park behind the house and to the right of the house. And a serious question as to whether it would be appropriate to ask for a variance to encroach on the park. Claudia, one last slide, Brown response to Wells' recommendations.
I didn't see that.
Bullet points or something, sorry, we're not muted.
Chaz, it's, it's just the, the Mr. Wells' recommendations word for word.
Okay, thank you.
Now, once again, on page five of Mr. Wells' report, he has 10 specific recommendations that he would put forward and Taylor's mentioned his review of those. The first of them is to establish the tree protection zone at the 25 foot mark. That's the 25 foot arc that you saw on that second drawing. The second point he, he recommended was the installation of a chain link fence. Again, Taylor had said that the ordinance says that a four foot wooden snow fence is the appropriate, the, the ordinance directed fencing to be installed. His third point is there should be no activity beyond the fence. And by the contractor or anybody else, no storage of equipment or materials or anything of the sort. Ms. Brown is prepared to go to Ace Hardware and buy a no trespassing or do not enter sign. And hook that on the fence facing the house and to instruct the contractor not to go into that area. The fourth point is he suggests a security camera. I thought that was a little odd and it's very clear that the Wampold Reinhardt household is very interested and lives right next door. If they saw any activity in the fenced area, I'm certain that they could call the building department and a stop work order would be issued. So it's, I, I just thought that was a little much. Also, a monetary appraisal of the tree should be established so that you can see it's an important tree. It's acknowledged that's an important tree. I don't think an appraisal of the tree at this point is necessary. He does suggest aeration of the soil with an air spade and the addition of humus and biochar as well as a 12 inch layer of wood chips. Ms. Brown has agreed to that. If, if, if there's to be construction during the summer months, which we would think to be June, July and August. And if it hadn't rained for, say, a week, then it could be irrigated for, say, 30 minutes. Or if Taylor has a different schedule, that would be fine with us, but that would be the, the, the goal would be to see that it gets water in the summer months. And the last of the items was a reconfiguration of the, of the house, that is sliding the house back. He says it's advisable for, I take it, for the Wampold family to have a plant health care for their tree. And he also recommended to them that they remove a box elder tree that was leaning in front of their house. That, that doesn't have to do with us. So of the 10 recommendations, six of them are relevant to the, the Brown property. And she's prepared to accommodate all six of those recommendations. And so this is by way of, of seeking to accommodate Ms. Reinhardt's strong feelings about her tree. It's acknowledged that it wasn't brought up before, but it's been brought up now. The arborist has looked at it, Mr. Wells has looked at it, we've looked at it. And Ms. Brown has tried to accommodate the, the concern.
May we speak just briefly? I want to say very clearly that I first emailed Mr. Saputa in June of 2020. So this concern has been raised at every meeting we were allowed to speak since the one last, in last year, in June. Second, while we acknowledge the advantage to the moving the house back, what we are suggesting is that if you do not remove the existing driveway, which constitutes demolition and keep the existing driveway and garage, then you only need one garage between the two houses and you gain 10 feet where this house, this addition can move both back and closer to the existing house that will greatly improve the safety of the tree without needing to go all the way back, which we believe if you are destroying the driveway, then we have an issue on notice.
And Chris, you've made a point about the, the appraisal, and I think Mr. Saputa can correct me on this if I'm wrong. I think the reason that that recommendation was made is that under the shade tree ordinance, if your construction activity does in fact kill our tree, then Ms. Brown would be liable for the value of the tree. So that was, as I understand it, that was the reason that he made that suggestion to sort of inject some, you know, reality into this.
If, if it were, if it were to ruin the tree, then it's understood that that, that would be her responsibility. So it, it, it needn't be done now, that's all. So, and, and by the way, the driveway is coverage in the borough. There's a old borough ordinance rules there are issues about lot coverage. And so the removal of the driveway was critical in order to allow for the structure to be installed. So it's, it's.
But then we're back to notice and demolition issues.
It's not, well, it's up to the, the HPC or this board to decide whether the removal of an old driveway is a demolition. I, I don't think it is, but if somebody else does, then that's that.
Right.
We still have the issue of a two car attached garage, which doesn't exist in the historic district either.
Yeah, the historic commission approved it. So I don't know that they, you know, here we are. So that's the presentation from the applicant. Let the board deal with it as it will.
Well, do, again, do any of the board members have any comments on this right now?
Steve, it, I, I think that, you know, the issue is you have a record in front of you for appeal. The tree wasn't part of it. I understand now that the tree's been brought up by the objector. Mr. Tar's indicating his client would just like to address it now so that they don't have to get delayed. When eventually a construction permit is requested and it has a formal review by the arborist. It's, you know, we're, we're going further and further away from what the record was for your appeal. And it sounds as if, even, even with these recommendations, even if the board said, fine, that sounds good to us. The objectors still have other issues they want reviewed tonight. They still have other what? Issues they're raising about HPC failure to follow its guidelines, et cetera. So I'm concerned because it seems to me that it's before you to review what HPC did. Did it comply with its regulations? If we're talking now about a potential change in the plan, I'm, I'm trying to figure out how you have jurisdiction to say, okay, go ahead, change it, then it's fine. That's why I asked Elizabeth, well, would it have to come back to you or would you say as HPC board? It's either administrative or that that's something Elizabeth and Julie would decide once they confer about it. But we're kind of removing further and further away from what is the scope of the appeal in front of you and what's your jurisdiction? So that's, that's a concern I have. But if, if the board is going to finish hearing it tonight, then I guess we need to hear whatever other objections there are to failure to comply with HPC guidelines. Because if you're making a decision tonight, then that's, you know, that's, that's the scope of what you're reviewing here. I understand Mr. Tar's concern, his client's concern, and they just would like to wrap it up. I understand that. But there, there, at the moment, there isn't any application yet for building and I understand that too. And when there is an application, then it will be formally reviewed by the arborist and either all these are great recommendations or not all of them or some of them or every one of them. So I, I would be very happy to hear from board members on this as well, but.
Well, I guess my question is, Elizabeth and Julie, with the changes that the applicant wants to make, would this require you to re-review the project?
I mean, my sense is that our biggest concern was keeping the existing house as as the first feature on the street. And we were actually hoping to move the duplex back as far as possible. So we, it actually is good that it's moving back. Um, I don't know, Elizabeth, do you want to comment?
Yeah, I think that if it is an agreement between the applicant and the objector that they're, the plan that's being proposed by the applicant is acceptable, then I feel that the HPC chair and myself, if the chair is in agreement, that we could do that administratively.
But it would have to, it would have to go back to you then?
It would.
Okay.
In, in some capacity.
But in some capacity, you'd have to look at it before you could pass on it or, or re-review it. And that, and an application to you, would that trigger a review by Taylor? Is that only when it goes to the building department?
Typically, when it goes to, to the, for, for engineering review.
Okay.
To work with the land use engineer.
Other board members?
We are not. Steve, I follow your thought. Feeling the same way, even if it goes back for an adminis, if, if it's administratively dealt with, that's going back to HPC.
Yes.
Therefore, it is not with us.
Right.
Even, even for it administrative, so.
So it would seem to make sense based on what we're hearing now that, that it should probably go back to the HPC to let them deal with it as they see fit. Either a new hearing or an administrative approval. It's, that would seem to make sense to me.
I would just, I would just make the point that, and I think you've gathered tonight, and I think everybody's been very polite and professional. There's not going to be agreement. It's not going to be treated administratively. It's likely going to be an appeal and it's going to come back. But if that's what you prefer, that's how we'll do it.
It's going to be appeal, an appeal to who?
Back, back to you.
No, that's not, I mean, that's not true. All we're looking for here is to like run our ideas by first Ms. Brown and secondly by the HPC. And if nobody thinks there's any merit to our ideas, we will go away. It is not our desire for this to be the rest of our life. This is not. This is not what we're, we just want our ideas heard. We have been trying to do that in the best way we can for a long time. If our ideas stink, then that's it. Then if people don't like our ideas, then that's too bad for us and we'll go away. We will not be coming back here for appeals.
It would seem to me, it would seem to me after what we've heard tonight, the best thing to do would be for this to go back to the HPC for a resolution. The house location is still in question, whether it moves five feet or seven feet, whether the patio disappears, the, the disposition of the existing driveway. There are a number of things that I think really shouldn't be discussed with this board, need to be discussed with the HPC. So Michael, does that seem to make sense?
Yeah, it does. I was going to say, well, one, if you haven't, if you handle it administratively, do you even take additional input from the neighbor? I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to mislead people if you don't even, if you don't do that. That's one question. Number two, I would think if you go back and look at it administratively as far as the tree issue, that you get Ed to give you advice on this demolition driveway issue, which may not be an issue, but they put it on the table and so be it. And, and get that put to bed as far as your attorney, the HPC attorney. And then if it comes back, it comes back. I hope it doesn't, but that's my feel.
Well, you know, I, I agree with you. I would think though that we would, if we say it should go back to the HPC, then, then, you know, for instance, the suggestions that you made, we'll bring that up to the HPC and let them decide. I mean, if, if they decide that they want input from the neighbors, which seems to make sense to me. But that's up to the HPC to decide. If it's done administrative, administratively, Elizabeth, Julie, would you still allow input from the neighbors?
Typically, when we have an administrative review, it is not reviewed with people outside the applicant.
Okay. In light of what you've heard tonight, would you want input from the neighbors? I'm not trying to put you on the spot.
I, I think that if we would want input put, it would almost be as if it should go before the full commission.
Okay. But that, but that's your decision, whether you do it administratively or you hear it by the full commission. But it would seem to make sense to me that this thing go back to you. And then again, hearing what I hear from the neighbors and excuse me, Chris, I understand your concern about time. I mean, it's up to the HPC to decide how to equitably resolve this. So once we say that it should go back to the HPC, then I think it's up to you, Elizabeth and Julie, to make a determination how best to handle this. But in my opinion, the best way to do this is for you to look at it again.
All right. And just for, for scheduling, so Elizabeth, I know we have a, a pretty full schedule coming up. So if it came back to HPC, what kind of timeline are we looking at?
Well, it's definitely not May. So perhaps June, depending on the, you know, what, what we, what else we have queued up. But we, we already know that May is booked.
Okay. In the interest of not slowing things down, Ms. Kim, I think you said that you wouldn't move it forward unless we were in agreement with the current page seven, this new pushback seven feet. And we can say that we are not, but that we do believe that if we could all sit together, Ms. Brown, my husband and myself, you and Ms. Capazoli, we could probably get this done without needing to go through all kinds of crazy, but that's just a suggestion.
I think if the. Mr. Tark could comment, maybe?
I always like to be optimistic.
Big comment. Well.
So I, I mean, I think that would be the optimum is working something out. But yeah, if everybody's willing, I'm willing for sure.
I, I will not speak for Ms. Brown. This is her judgment to make and she'll make it in the manner in which she brings the application. So we hear you. We appreciate very much the time you all have spent, but it's clear that what the direction is, so that's fine.
Can I just ask, Ms. Brown, do you want to say something? You're muted.
That's a good thing.
Hi, obviously I have a lot to say, but I know that you're not interested in all of the details that have led up to here. But just to address the actual plan, you know, within a, a building site, you have a building envelope. And as far as the impervious goes, with this additional structure, the total increased impervious is approximately 190 feet, which does not even require stormwater management. So this idea of the whole driveway issue of taking away, there's an enormous driveway with an enormous parking area in the rear. The, the existing garage would remain, which by the way, is so rotted that it's, it's, you, you could never park a car in there. But that would be addressed at another time. So I mean, there's a lot that I have to say, but I think with these neighbors who, by the way, I'm at the house pretty much every day and have been for two years. Never, I've seen the wife one time, one time knocked on my window saying that her internet wasn't working. So I've never met them and I'm a very private person. I like to share things with people that I know. Having been to three meetings in which the first meeting, there were a whole array of missed facts. I did never, I did not ever agree to allow them to tell me what to build. I said, what I told Chris Tar was, sure, if they'd like to pay for my architect, I'd be happy to have them decide what is built on there. For me, it really just came down to the size of the lot, making everything conform with Princeton's laws, rules, ordinances. I was not aware of the tree issue. The three meetings that I attended, the tree was never ever brought up. The beautiful thing about this lot that's been there for many, many years is that there's not one tree that needs to come down for the construction, which is extremely unusual in the borough. The lot on the other side of the neighbors, 45 South Harrison, was a side lot that came off their lot and was sold the same year they bought their house in 1997. That house was constructed in 2000 and has an attached front facing garage. I also own two other houses in the Jug Town Historic District around the corner. And there are three-story houses that have recently been approved and nine-foot ceilings. So I just like to make sure that people really understand the facts that we're dealing with. I like to deal in facts. I'm extremely open. When I went before HPC, when people questioned colors, all of that, I said, tell me what you'd like. Tell me what you'd like. My whole purpose in going there, two meetings before the final meeting was to find out exactly what do they want? And from my understanding, it's about the front facade. It is about the streetscape. And I feel like the plan was approved based on that and moving it back seven feet. I don't believe that it changes the streetscape. And as Julie mentioned, it actually should help the people that I went before in, enjoy this project because it's further back from the historical house. It now doesn't even attach to the old part of the house at all. A kitchen window can remain that people had a question about, et cetera. So that's all I have to say. I mean, it's been two years that I've owned this house, that I've tried to figure out how to best develop it. And the rear in which the rear property behind the 35-foot setback is where the neighbors indicated in the very first meeting, they'd like it. And I just have never wanted to go for a variance. I don't believe that would be fair to everybody else on the park.
Ms. Brown, I've been asked whether you were sworn, I thought you had, but I'll just ask you. You'll confirm everything you said this evening is truthful, correct?
Yes, yes.
Thank you very much.
Well, it would, it would seem to me that, that with the, the number of changes that have been discussed, that in my opinion, it should go back to the HPC. And then I think it's up to the HPC to decide exactly how they want to review this and what action they want to take. And I mean, do the, do the neighbors, if it's a formal application, have the, have the ability to speak or, or if you feel it should be done administratively with no additional input. I think it's, it's, I think that's up to you. It would seem to me that, that you know, maybe, maybe some discussion would help just to resolve this.
Understood.
Okay, so what Karen? Do we, do we take formal action on this by, by making a recommendation or how do we do this?
No, I think just the way you would with an application, you're going to make a motion in a second. And if your motion is that you want to remand it back to HPC to review whatever changes Ms. Brown is proposing to the plan, that'll be up to HPC, whether it should be handled administratively or with the full commission. They will have in their discretion what they think is appropriate.
Okay, so that's fine. So I guess what I'd like to do now, since we've had everybody speak just procedurally, do I open up the, the, the floor to any public comment, not from the applicant? Or the, or the, you know, other than the next door neighbor who spoke already, can I open it up to? Okay, so is there anybody else in the audience who'd like to speak to this matter, who hasn't spoken before? Okay. Claudia, is there anybody out there indicating?
And one, one second. Okay, Clifford Zink.
Okay. He's muted right now. No, he's not muted, but he's not visiting.
So I'm trying to start my video.
Well, we can hear you.
So for some reason it opened my video.
Okay, but maybe we can, Karen, can, can you swear, Mr. Zink in?
Here he is. Thank you. Swear for any testimony you give this evening will be truthful.
I do.
Thank you.
So my name is Clifford Zink. I live across the park. And I support Mr. Cohen's and appears to be Mr. Floyd's. Also, a recommendation to send this back to HPC. There are a number of issues here that have been raised. If the HPC had been aware of the tree, that might have affected the way the conversation occurred at the commission in terms of the design, whether the changes are adequate. The, the proposed building is very high. I don't know that, how that's going to impact the canopy of the tree. Maybe that's something that HPC would need to look at. The tree has been there 100 years or more. And so another month or two on the part of the applicant to be able to take steps to ensure that this tree survives. The tree is a very significant natural part of the historic streetscape. As the app, as the neighbors have said, it's a pair of bride and groom trees, which was a tradition back in the 19th century when people got married. And these are sycamores and among the largest in the state. If anybody on the board is not familiar with these trees and how significant they are on the historic landscape, I would recommend that you go see them. So I think sending it back to HPC to deal with the issue of the impact of the construction on the historic tree, to consider the driveway if that's an issue. And I don't know about the notification, but there seems to be enough issues to send it back to HPC. So I would support the chairs and Mr. Floyd's thinking in that direction.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Claudia, is there anyone else who would like to speak?
I don't see any other hands.
Okay. All right, so we'll end the public portion. And let's go into executive session. So I guess, I guess if we're, we would make, and Karen, correct me if I'm wrong, we would make a motion if we wanted to go back to the HPC, we'll make a motion to return it to the HPC for reconsideration or reevaluation?
I, I guess you could say reevaluation, but that's simply because something's being changed on the plan. That's, that's what HPC would be looking at.
Yeah. Yeah, and then the HPC will decide how to handle it.
Correct.
Okay. All right, so that's, that's the motion before us. If any board members would like to comment on it or make a motion for approval or rejection.
I'd like to make a friendly amendment to that and just add in there somewhere that this is not a zoning board issue about variances.
Yes, okay, that's fine. This is a point, as a point of clarification, yes, I agree with that.
And I think it's worth noting that the, the, Ms. Brown did make an adjustment to the plan to just for the tree after she found out it was an issue.
Yeah.
And so, you know, it's not a, it's not really a question about variances and all the rest of that. It's.
No, it's, it's right. You're, you're right. That's fine. We can just note that in there.
Thank you.
As part of the discussion in the minutes or in the resolution. Okay, thank you. So back to where we were, does somebody want to make a motion?
Sure, I'll move to, to send it back to HPC.
Thank you.
And it, it is in fact, the, the fact that she is moving it back, that is sending it back to HPC, that she's addressing that concern about the tree, that, that's what's sending it back, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, now whether, however, HPC, I mean, HPC has been in the discussion here. And, and so it's up to them to, to decide how they want to handle it.
Yeah.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, thank you. All right, Claudia, please call the roll.
Okay, Mr. Davids?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Vavani's?
Yes.
Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, well, thanks and, and thank you for coming before us. And hopefully this will now move towards resolution.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Steve, can we take two minutes?
We can. Okay, so it is nine o'clock. So let's give it 9:03, give you an extra minute. Okay, we'll just wait till oh three and reconvene.
Hi, Dino, do you need me to bring anybody over to from the attendees? Do you know?
I'm sorry, say that again.
Do you need anybody over from the attendees?
Yes, I do. I I need. I need Eton Webb.
Okay, hold on one second.
Yep, sure.
Okay.
And any Jim Kyle.
Okay.
And any Catherine Knight.
I don't see her on. Do you know she has a?
Uh oh. Well, she she's away. Who knows what her connection's like?
Might be under a different name too, Dino. I don't know.
Oh, yeah, that's that's true. Jimmy, one.
I have somebody here on a cell phone. Do you know her cell phone number, two one five?
Let's see.
I think that's her.
Oh, she said she may be listed as Don Danny.
On down, yeah, there you go. You see that? It's a six oh nine, two oh three, five two four four number.
No, this is a two one five number.
There is a Don Danny in attendees. There you go.
Moving them over.
Perfect.
Okay, so we're ready to start again. Okay, so our next case is fifteen to seventeen Edwards Place. Block forty one point oh one lot sixty two and sixty three in the R four zone in the Mercer Hill Historic District. Derek, would you like to read? Your memo or give us a excerpt of your memo?
Yes, sir. Karen, did I need to be sworn?
Karen, you're muted.
There we go. All right, Mr. Bridger, so let's swear you and Mr. Purcellin just. Be safe side. You both serve from your testimony this evening will be truthful.
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Good evening. We're here tonight to hear an application of the Abad Labovich on campus Princeton Incorporated. They are seeking. An FAR variance on related bulk variance and minor site plan approval for expansion in addition to the building at fifteen seventeen Edwards Place. The applicant has requested numerous waivers from the checklist items. And staff has reviewed these waiver requests and. We recommend that they be granted. Subject property is located in the R four zoning district and in the Mercer Hill Historic District. Properties to the north and east. Are the Princeton University Parking Lot Number Eight to the west across Edwards Place. To the south is multifamily residential and in lot eight to the north is the Nassau Club and to the east is University Place. The building is currently a nonconforming two family dwelling fifteen Edwards Place, which for is a Chabad. It serves Orthodox Jewish student community of Princeton University is occupied by the Rabbi and his wife. The board may recall that there was a hearing for the initial. Use of this property back in, I believe, two thousand and six, and I did forward the findings of fact from that. Case earlier today. Existing site includes a two and a half story building, a garage, walkways and driveways. The applicant has purchased the adjoining property at seventeen Edwards Place as it proposes to consolidate the two units. Into a single housing. Which will. Comprise the Chabad and family dwelling area. Interior modifications include expansion of the attic area to increase additional living space for the family and renovations to enlarge the Chabad. Chabad space, which will occupy the basement, first floor and half of the second floor. Additional improvements include a covered porch for the new single family front entrance and accessible. Access ramp, a sunroom addition in the rear with a terrace above and a multipurpose room below and an exterior deck. New concrete paper driveways will be constructed on either side of the building. And will replace the two existing walkways. The existing garage will be demolished and a bike rack and a trash enclosure will be installed and new landscaping is is proposed. The actual impervious coverage is reduced from eighty four point six to seventy two point seven percent under this plan. As I mentioned earlier, the property is a preexisting nonconforming use. And this was considered an expansion of a nonconforming use and as such an NJ SA forty colon fifty five D dash seventy D one variance is required. In addition to that, that's for a expansion of a nonconforming use. There's an FAR variance required. That's a forty colon fifty five D dash seventy D four. Permitted FAR is forty percent. The existing is sixty three and a half and the proposed is seventy nine percent. The applicant is requesting. Bulk variance for a rear yard setback to permit the sunroom addition. Thirty five feet is required eighteen and a half exist and five feet is proposed. A side yard setback for the deck. Eight feet is required, three feet, four inches is proposed. Impervious coverage forty nine and a half is permitted eighty four point six exist and seventy two point seven is proposed. Section four oh three I three B for the driveway on the left requires a five foot setback. The proposed setback is one. And there is a six square foot sign variance on. It's it's we're asking actually the board for an interpretation because. Nonprofits and quasi public buildings, churches and educational institutions are permitted a sign with an area not to exceed sixteen square feet. If the board finds that this sign doesn't fit in to the mission of the Chabad, then a variance is requested. Excuse me. Parking on the site will consist of two driveways that can accommodate a total of four vehicles. The proposed expansion of the Chabad house features several assembly spaces, including fifty four seats in the multi. Purpose prayer room on the second floor. The applicant should address how the assembly spaces will be utilized and how many visitors are expected and how parking will be addressed at the site. Again, they are proposing a two by three foot identification sign. Staff recommends the waivers. The applicant will have to. Provide an estimate of cost of the site improvements in order to determine the amount of inspection fees. And then we request that the following ideas. Items be items of conditions of approval. Details must be provided of how the runoff from the roof is collected and conveyed off the site. Details of the sign should be submitted for review for compliance. All downspouts must be connected to the existing underground system and the applicant shall submit to the municipal engineer an estimate of the cost of construction. Of the site improvements for determination of inspection fees. As I noted earlier, the property is in the. Mercer Hill Historic District and was reviewed by the Historic Preservation Commission and they do have a report and I believe. Ms. Kim is still here, so if she's ready, I will turn it over to her unless you guys have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. Michael?
Yeah. Quick question on. In two oh in two thousand and six, when it got. Variances was the pre was the nonconforming use. Active at that time?
Now, that was the. The hybrid, the the two kitchens in the Chabad house at that time, that's when the initial the the variance was granted for the nonconforming use.
Then can you can you tell me why? Their variance was not needed or is is not needed now?
I it is needed. I said they needed D one expansion of a. I made a misspoke, but they needed expansion of a nonconforming use. They need two use variances. One for expansion of the nonconforming use and one for the floor area.
Okay, that being the. Chabah. Chabah.
Come on, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, sir. Elizabeth, do you want to talk? I don't know if you're going to stay on the whole for the whole meeting or would you like to go before we start with our presentation?
No, I'll just do a quick summary. Mr. Bridger did a great job of the overview of the project and I'm just going to hit the highlights in which HPC had. Their recommendations. That the building itself, the double units are really viewed as a. Very symmetrical. Both sides are pretty identical to each other. So certain things which they felt would. Improve the design from the historic preservation standpoint was to. Make the front door more symmetrical, the way it was proposed. They had proposed one single door with a side light. The applicant did agree and I believe the plans had been revised to show a single door with two side lights, which HPC had. Had agreed that they found that acceptable. As far as the shutters go. They wanted to remove the shutters on the side of unit fifteen Edwards Place. And although there was historic photograph showing that they felt that that was appropriate because they felt that it was a bit. A lot of clutter there and they felt that it actually presented the building much better. They had no objection to the addition. They they actually were happy that the ramp was on the side instead of the front of the house. That way they could retain the streetscape and integrity of the building itself. The signage, because the details of the signs were not finalized. They recommend for the applicant to come through an administrative review for science, which typically is done for business signs. You know, that way, so since those details are not available, they felt that that was a better way to deal with it. I'm just seeing if there's anything else that they had talked about and perhaps the vice chair. I mean, the the chair, Ms. Capizoli, would like to add something to that, but otherwise they were supportive of that. And just to add one point, the demolition of the garage is because it's an historic district is solely under the view of the HPC. And I believe that you had received their resolution where they did permit for it to be demolished. However, they did recommend for it to be reused if possible, but if not, that they would accept for it to be demolished.
Um, I Julie Capizoli, HPC Chair. I just like to add that the HPC was enthusiastic about the improvements to this building. It's a beautiful historic duplex and. It's a great opportunity for this organization to really bring it up to. Modern standards and so HPC fully supported the variances necessary.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Spatachini, would you like to continue?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dino Spatachini, on behalf of the applicant this evening, the applicant is actually Rabbi Eton Webb and his wife Giddy Webb. And the property owner is the Chabad as Mr.
Excuse me.
Bridger mentioned earlier. We have three witnesses this evening. Eton Webb, Catherine Knight, our architect. And Jim Kyle, our planner. Karen, I don't know if you want to swear them all in or have them.
Absolutely. If all of you would raise your right hand, you swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful.
I do.
Thank you.
Okay, with that said, I'd like to just briefly say that, you know, sometimes we have applications, you know, it's work. We have to just take them on and it's how we pay the bills and do things like that. In the short time that I've gotten to know Rabbi and his wife. Been an absolute pleasure working for them. They seem to be a real fabric of the community and a very integral part of the student population. So it's been, this one's been a pleasure and a treat, not like some. Not all are like that. I hate to admit that, but that is the case. So Eton, if you could. Unmute yourself and just tell us briefly. You know, about the Chabad, the support you provide, the services you provide. And then I'm sure the board will have more questions, but we'll probably go back through, have Catherine bring us through the site after your testimony. And and then they'll get a better handle of how the facility is going to work. But if you'd start us off briefly with that, that would be fantastic.
Okay, thank you. First of all, thank you, Dino. It's also a pleasure working with you and Kathy and Derek and the whole board and Elizabeth and Julie. Really thank you for your support. We enjoyed being with you last month and we're we're fortunate to be in in Princeton. Giddy and I moved here in two thousand and two. We've been in Princeton for. Close to two decades now, so it's been it's been a while. And as Derek noted, we did purchase the first half of fifteen in in two thousand and six. Just two notes, I guess, and I'll really not say much more than that. First of all, I get these not here and I apologize for her, but this actually this actually goes to the entire purpose of. Of the application here. And that we had, we made a rule very early on when we moved here, we work with the Princeton University students and and. We very early on decided that we are going to give them. The the first right of of every bit of attention that we have and that they come before alumni. And and they come before everything else. And so as we were here in this, in the beginning of this meeting, there were two students who walked in about. Twenty five minutes ago and said, hey, Giddy, you have time to talk. So she's not here right now. But but that is entirely the purpose and and I and I think that that also talks to the to to what what we want. For us, a building is is just a vehicle. We want it to be obviously the most gorgeous vehicle that we can have, but ultimately it's a it's it's the goal of a building is not to have a pretty building. The goal of building for us is the use. We've assisted. Probably a thousand alumni at this point to at one point than students over the last twenty years. Who've, you know, come through year after year after year after year after year. And we we're fortunate, we're really, really, really fortunate to be in this town, to be. Among incredible people. I don't know what more is there to say. I just I thank you. I thank you every day and I know Derek and I have worked. For years and years and years on 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 the the various activities here in this house. And some of you are aware in various capacities and it's. It's an honor. It is. It is an honor to be able to work with with other human beings and to try to guide them and it's a we're just we're just we're thankful and grateful.
Eton, let's, I'm sure the board will have some more questions of you later, but let's let's bring Catherine on qualifier or have her go through the facility. That way they'll get a sense of what we're doing, how the breakup is between your family living unit and and the rest of the house. And we'll have Kathy go through that. Jim, the only thing we might want to do is our first exhibit. Do you want to put up the aerial, either you or Catherine?
Well, Kathy's doing it, so she.
Okay, okay. That's fine. Catherine, we just want you to give your credentials, you're still licensed, appeared before this board, et cetera. If you can give us some of that and have the chair accept you as an expert in architecture.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. I'm Catherine Knight. I own that architect's a firm in Princeton, and I'm a registered architect in, in New Jersey. And I'm representing Chabad with this expansion project.
We, Catherine, not to interrupt you, but you presented before us before, and we would accept you as an expert.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
In the effort of speed, I've been asked to go very quickly through these drawings, so I, you know, considering the hour, so I will do my best. Obviously, if there's any questions or if anybody wants to slow me down, please let me know. But I've been given instructions that I shouldn't spend too long, since you have all received copies of them.
Quick question, Kathy, is this collectively Exhibit A one, or each sheet is a separate exhibit?
It'd probably be easier, Karen, if you make the whole, the entire, this was submitted as part of the application. So probably easiest if you make it A one for all sheet to you, though.
Great, thank you. You're looking at the cover sheet and the survey, and just to get you oriented, this is number fifteen. This is where Exit Chabad is now. They, they occupy this side, and they've just purchased the other half from the university. And that's what they're expanding into, and that's what our expansion is involved. We have a site plan here, just to get you oriented. This is Edward's place in the front. This is the driveways along the side. This is the building where they are now going to occupy the entire building. We're adding a ramp to the side. We're adding, we're modifying the front to get a single front entrance, which is more appropriate as for a single occupancy. And there's a sunroom addition and a new stair going in the back of the house. That's kind of giving you the summary of it. Starting at the plans in the basement, this is, this is the space that they've currently occupied. This is the new space, and this is the addition in the rear. Everything that you see shaded in yellow will be the Chabad use. So that's the one that's the public use for the students and alumni and other on campus. And anything that you see shaded in blue is for the family who resides at the house. So you're looking first at the basement plan, where we will have some occupiable space in the basement. There are two rooms for visiting parents, which are currently quite well-used in the facility. And there's just one with egress windows and a meeting room down there, as well as a visiting rabbi's office and some storage and mechanical space. In the attic, we, they currently have this side, and they have three dormers up here that were added in by variance in two thousand and six. And we're looking to replicate them on this side. There's an existing dormer in the middle, and we're looking to add a front and a back dormer to mimic the other side and just to maximize space for bedrooms. We're also taking the rear and just extending, there's a couple of small dormers across there now, and looking to extend them all the way across. This is the first floor, so this is as you come in, we've now got proposing a center front entrance and one nice, large meeting room, an additional room in the back, which is replacing, if anyone's familiar with the site, there's seasonal tents that are up right now, and they're not particularly attractive. And this will replace those seasonal tents and allow more space for the, for the groups that they're accommodating. There will be a new commercial kitchen going into the space because of the number of meals served and office space and some handicapped restrooms. This is the second floor, so I'm sorry, the order's a little crazy, but on the second floor, here's the, there's, here's the family side. With the bedrooms above, this is their living, their kitchen, dining, living space. And there's an additional meeting room on the second floor for the Chabad function. The new stair is just providing safety for the back, so there's a second means of egress for the occupancy load. It's also providing a separation for the family, will primarily be using this stair. And then, and the students will be using the front stair and the ramp on the side. So looking at the front elevation now, you see the existing elevation with the stairs, and we have a center door with the center with the Scott matching skylights as requested by HPC and the single stair. Looking down the side, this is where the existing dormers are that were matching on the opposite side. And this is the new addition on the first floor in the stair tower you're seeing beyond. This is the rear view of the, the home. There's currently, or there's the structure, there's currently tents in this backyard and two small additions. And it's just being replaced with a larger addition that will replace the tents and provide more meeting space. And this is the opposite side with the additional dormers on the roof to, to match, match the number fifteen side. And you see the, you see the dormer extending across the back here, replacing some smaller dormers that exist. So that's a really quick summary. These are the existing plans are the, at the end of this, so just the existing ones to compare. So that was a really quick summary of everything. Do you know, was I, was I fast enough? Did I cover everything?
Yeah, I was, I was worried that we were going to lose connection with you where you're located, so that was my concern. I'm sure the board has questions, and you'll be more than able to answer them. So Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I don't know, have you want to proceed? If you want to wait until after the planner's done or ask Catherine questions now, but at your pleasure.
Well, if, if there's a chance that we might lose connection, I'll ask the, the board if they have any questions of Catherine right now.
I have a couple, I have a couple of little questions. Can you show the slide of the new addition on the second floor? Go back to that.
The second floor plan?
Yes. This one.
Sorry, yeah.
What is that back room that is neither blue nor gray?
Good question. That's a, that's an outside deck over a meeting room below.
Okay, thank you. And how many bedrooms? How many sleeping rooms will be in this? How many beds will there be in this addition, in this new building?
Well, in the basement, there's two for visiting, visiting alumni or parents often, I think is what it is. And then in the, in the second floor, they do have a family of eight, the webs do, so they were putting in four children's bedrooms and a master suite.
Thank you.
I, I have one quick question. So the, the ramp on the side that you're adding is for handicapped access to the first level?
That's correct.
So there'll be no handicap access to any other levels? It's, you're not putting an elevator in or anything like that?
No, we have less than three thousand square feet per floor, so the code allows us not to make those handicap accessible on the, on the upper, on the other.
Yeah, no, I understand that. I just was wondering if that was the plan. Okay, thank you.
Oh, I have one more question. How many students do you regularly have in attendance at a function on a Friday night or something?
Eitan, are you still there?
I am here.
There you go.
How are you? It's a good question. So this year, we are getting about sixty, I think, this coming Friday night?
Sixty or sixteen?
Six zero.
Is that about average for what you get a year?
Pretty much. I mean, actually, this is the first year, it, it varies. I mean, it varies a lot depending on what's going on. If there's a triangle show, our numbers can dip. If there's, if, if parents are in town, it can go up. I mean, does it, we, we deal with a college crowd, which also, you know, sort of responds to the, to the parking question that someone brought up. We have no parking because nobody has cars. Our, our crowd is a hundred percent undergraduate students and a hundred percent of them walk. So the, or bike, but they, but, 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 you know, the, the numbers really vary. And honestly, up until this year, we've never taken reservations, because what we want to do is we really want it to feel like a home. So we, we truly, truly don't know the number this year because of COVID. As the first year that we required reservations, that we could be properly socially distanced and know if we ever need to contact trade. So this is the year that we can truly give you absolute numbers.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, any other board questions of the, Michael?
Yes, of the architect. I'm sort of trying to see if, if you can estimate, you know, people, number of capacity by room. You have in the basement, the, the multipurpose room, and you have a lounge. I'm not saying everything's occupied at the same time. You have on the first floor, the sun meet, sunroom, meeting room, and events multi-function room, and then a small other meeting room. And on the second floor, the prayer room, which you have some symbols there, would say it's up to about fifty-two people. I, I, what's, what's your biggest events that you anticipate? And maybe that's a question for the rap, I don't know.
Well, I think I can start with answering that we did establish an occupancy load on the drawings, and I can bring them back up if you'd like. But we did put an occupancy load of forty-eight, forty-eight maximum in the basement. Here, I'll bring up, I'll bring it up in the screen. It was.
They want to bring up Sheet A one, that'd be great.
So let me see if I can blow this up a little bit so you can read.
Yep.
I've just got to slide it up. Getting there. Can every kids, people see my screen?
You can. You're almost there.
I'm almost there. Okay, I'm getting down to this little, little chart in the bottom, which I can understand why you. So there's the occupancy load that we're establishing for the building with the basement having forty-eight people, the first floor a hundred and fifty, second floor forty-five for the Chabad side, and, and eight for the family side. And then in the attic, eight people as well. So that's the occupancy load that we're designing, designing for. The building will be fully sprinkled, have, have sprinklers on all levels.
But you don't anticipate a full occupancy in this at any one time?
No.
What is it called? I mean, what is the building classified as? Is it a home? Is it a?
Is it a club? Is it a? It is.
I think it's an assembly occupancy, but, but it falls under the business class.
Okay, thank you.
It would have a resident, a residential occupancy also in it.
Yes, that's correct.
So it's a multi, it's a mixed-use occupancy from a code standpoint.
Chairman Code?
Yes.
I was wondering if the applicant could speak to, there was an air handler added that kind of slipped through some of the other reviews. I just want to bring it up and have you talk about.
Yes. Kathy, can you explain that?
Yes. So as we've been going through this review process, we're working more and more on the drawings, you know, as, as in a, a parallel to it. And if for this commercial kitchen, it was determined that we need some pieces of equipment on the exterior that was not anticipated in the drawings that were submitted in October. So if you, we are, we have found what we feel is the least in visual impact for the project. And this in red here is a makeup air unit needed for, for the, for the kitchen hood. And we're proposing putting that over the stair, and I'll show you what that looks like on the outside. And then we also will have an exhaust for the hood as well. So if you look, sorry, one more page. It's probably the best way to see it. This is the rear view of, of the structure. Here is the, this new stair. And the makeup air unit we're proposing to put right here. The earlier versions show this is a pitched roof, proposing to put that there and, and wrap it with this, with a screen device, a, some kind of a railing device similar to what we'd have on the deck. And then, and then we also have the exhaust that we talked about, which is shown back here, if you can see my cursor. And then if you see on the side, it's right here as well, the exhaust. So those were not shown in the earlier versions, and those were added to the April thirteenth version.
What's the occupancy of the house to the left of this? What, what type of view? Is that a residential use next door?
Yes, and I believe it's owned by the university, although someone could correct me. Much of, much of the neighbors are university owned.
I mean, it is a residence, all right. Okay.
I, I have a question about the kitchen. What, how often, is it for once a week kind of meals? Is it three meals a day? How often is that being fully in use, the commercial kitchen?
Eitan?
And so there, there's in use, and then there's in use in the way that you're saying. So it's in use right now. My Giddy is right now in the, in the kitchen breeding challah, which is a Jewish bread with three students, I believe. So I guess that's in use, but not in the, in the way that you, you know, think of.
Right, yeah, I just mean, yeah.
So the, so our big events are really, the, the biggest event really is Friday night. College students, it, it has both a religious function and also a practical function. Again, things we've learned over the, over twenty years, so their religious function is clear. It's the Sabbath, and we want to welcome people in, have them enjoy and to beautiful space. Less, the, the practical function is that Friday night is when students go out to drink. And we would prefer them to, I, I'm just, I'm very, I'm going to be very blunt. We prefer them to A, not go out to drink, but if they are going to go out to drink, let them at least go out to drink after they've eaten. So for those of you who have children, you can appreciate this. And so we really put a lot more effort into Friday night than we do into a Saturday afternoon lunch. So that's, that's really our, our biggest event. We'll have, well, we can have twenty students for lunch on a Saturday afternoon. We can have a brunch on a, on a, on a, on a Sunday morning with, you know, eight, ten students. And we'll have classes throughout the week, so we'll have people that'll come in. But for some of those classes, we'll also just order in food. So really, the heavy use of the kitchen is going to be mostly for Friday night and then for holidays. So for Rosh Hashanah, for a Passover, for a Seder, if you know, for things like that.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you. All right, any other board questions, or can we move forward on the presentation?
All right, let's keep going.
Catherine, thank you. Jim, are you there? There, oh, yeah, you're dead center. Look at you, Hollywood. So Jim, obviously you appear before this board, but briefly, if you could give them your credentials.
Excuse me.
Unless the chair wants to accept you as is, but.
No, Jim has testified.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Code.
Here, Dino.
It's not, not a bad thing, not a bad thing.
I enjoyed very much. Yeah, I was retained by the applicant to review the planning issues associated with this. We've met as a team a number of times to discuss not just the development of the plans, but also the function of the facility. I reviewed the plans that Kathy prepared, also the zoning ordinance and master plan, as well as the memos prepared by the board's professionals. And I've been out to the site a few times as well, most recently yesterday. So as Derek had indicated in, in his report, there are some variances that are necessary for this facility. It was granted variance approval in two thousand and six. We're now expanding that use. So we do need a D variance for that. We have an FAR variance for maximum FAR. Forty percent is permitted in the R four zone. We have sixty-three and a half today, and then we're going up to seventy-nine percent with the additions. Rear yard setback thirty-five feet is required. We're proposing five to the sunroom. There's also bulk variance for side yard setback, eight feet is required, and we have three foot four inches. This is actually to the stair that leads up to the deck on the right-hand side, adjacent to the university parking lot number eight. There's also a driveway setback on the west side, five feet is required, and we're proposing one. And then also bulk variance for coverage, forty-nine and a half is permitted. We have eighty-four point six today, and shockingly, we're reducing that by twelve percent, down to seventy-two point seven. I didn't believe it myself, but we have confirmed it, and we are actually reducing impervious coverage on the site from what exists today. So let me first address the, the use variance here. As I looked at this application and I looked at the, the function of the Chabad, you know, it's, it's kind of twofold, as the rabbi indicated. It's their family home, but it also serves an important function within the community. It's a non-for-profit corporation, and it's not, you know, just strictly, it's, it's not necessarily a house of worship, given the combined function of, of being a family home. But there are religious observances that occur in the facility. So that includes fellowship and gathering for religions, observance and instruction. And as, as the rabbis indicated, there are, you know, social functions where people get together. There is some religious observation and functions that occur there, too. So I think based on. So I think based on the function of this facility that it does qualify as an inherently beneficial use. Uh, again, it's, it's kind of a combination of a house of worship, but um, you know, I think the functions that they provide, the community service. That's provided to university students. I think it, it squarely falls in the realm of being an inherently beneficial use. Um, and when we, when we talk about an inherently beneficial use, there's a court case called Smart, S M R, V Farallon Board of Adjustment. Um, the court there found that inherently beneficial uses are generally limited in number within a single municipality, which is the case here. Uh, there is another Habad um of Mercer County that's up on two O six, kind of almost as you go into Montgomery Township. And there's also the Jewish Center on Route twenty seven near Carnegie Lake, that's, you know, located some distance from the center of town. Uh, this is really the only Habad that's located in what is the former borough. And within, pretty much within the Princeton campus. And that's really what this uh use serves is, is the rabbi indicated. It's mostly undergraduate students that are coming to this facility. Um, further inherently beneficial uses are generally non-commercial, nonprofit, service-oriented institutions, which is the case here. So I think it's um my opinion that this would qualifies an inherently beneficial use. And the, the importance of that distinction is that the proofs for the use variants are slightly different. I would say it's, it's a little bit less of a legal burden. Um, you know, the use generally serves the public welfare and that's purpose A, so. Of the municipal land use law. So once we make a determination that the use is inherently beneficial, um, there are some different considerations on the use variant side. So first and foremost, it presumptively satisfies the positive criteria. So as I mentioned, purpose A to promote the general welfare, uh that's really what's at the heart of an inherently beneficial use. That community service aspect that we've talked about and that important function that it serves um to the university community and, and the students. The other part of it, so when we say presumptively satisfies the positive criteria, we don't go through all. The purposes of the municipal land use law to demonstrate special reasons, that's essentially satisfied. And the second part of that is that we don't necessarily have to show that the site is particularly suited to the proposed use. Um, I would say that that can be readily demonstrated here. Um, you know, the Habad has existed here. Uh, for some time and it's in close proximity to the student population that it's intended to serve. So uh we have a lot of student dorms that are located just to the west of the site. Obviously, there are some, you know, throughout the campus. But uh most of those dorms are located within close proximity to the site and walking distance. So it's really a location. Uh, that makes it accessible to the university students who walk and bike there on a, on a regular basis. So when we look at uh an inherently beneficial use and we discuss the negative criteria. Um, typically for a D variance like this, we would talk about Medici V B P R, which in, in the enhanced quality of proof. However, um for an inherently beneficial use, the consideration is slightly different. So there's a, a court case um called Sika V Board of Adjustment of Township of Wall. And this was a nineteen ninety two case where the court determined that um there's a different, we'll say, set of rules or rather a test. That the board would employ um when considering the negative criteria for an inherently beneficial use. And this is a four-part test. Uh, the first part is to identify the public interest at stake, realizing that some uses are more compelling than others. Uh, second, identify any detrimental effects that could ensue from the grant to the variance. Third is identify any conditions that the board can place to reduce those detrimental effects. And then finally, fourth, determine if on balance, the public welfare benefit outweighs any potential detrimental effects. Of course, affording appropriate weight to any um conditions that you can place to reduce those detrimental effects. So going through the um first part of the test, the public interest at stake, as we described, the Habad provides an important function. Of fellowship and religious instruction to the university community, particularly students. Uh, as, as Rabbi Web had said, you know, Gitti was there, you know, just talking with students. Uh, they provide that function to them. Uh, which is important. It also provides an opportunity for gathering for religious observance and instruction, including gathering at Jewish holidays. You know, where students that might not be able to make it home for the holidays, uh for Jewish holidays, have a place to go so they can um. You know, and if you look at some of the material on the website, uh a lot consider it to be a home away from home. So it really provides that important function uh for, for students in that respect. So we think that there's absolutely an important community function here, um and that the public benefit is great, particularly for university students. Second part of the test, identifying any detrimental effects. Um, the Habad is function here for some time, as, as we said. So the use is not foreign to the site or to the neighborhood. Um, with the proposed expansion, also many of the activities that are currently occurring outside in tents. That was part of the, uh there was a zoning application for uh the erection of, of temporary tents out in the back of the facility. Uh, there were two that were put up. What, with the grain of the variance here, um we're really bringing a lot of those functions that are occurring outside in the tents inside the building. So I think there's, in terms of any detrimental effect, i- it's really going to not necessarily eliminate, but reduce the amount of outdoor activity. Which we think will be a benefit um to the neighborhood and, and to the neighbors. As uh Rabbi Web had said, most of the students um that come here, if not all, either walk or bike to the facility. So there's no increase in uh car traffic or there's no, you know, parking situation that occurs on Edward's Place. Uh, or in the university lot, you know, most people are coming on bike or foot. So it's not going to increase traffic or, or create any parking issues uh on this dead end street. And also the site is, is really part of the campus. So the level of activity in the area is generally greater than, you know, many of the strictly residential neighborhoods. That we have um within the former borough. So the increased, increased activity, uh really the foot traffic, the biking is, is pretty normal. As we'd indicated as well, there is a university parking lot that kind of wraps um around the back of the site. And let me just, um, if I can share my screen real quick, did submit an aerial photo exhibit, if I can find it. Bear with me one second. Okay, there we go. Okay, so this is an aerial photo and tax parcel base map. This was submitted as an exhibit. Uh, this map was prepared April fifteenth, two thousand and twenty one by me. Uh, you can see here in the center of the exhibit, the two lots, sixty two and sixty three outlined in yellow. Uh, you can actually see the, the outdoor tents. Um, I'm tracing with my hand here. So there were two that were erected in, in the back of, of the lot. And along the side. You can see here, this is lot eight, um, the university. And then we also have, as Derek mentioned, there is a multifamily structure located on the south side of Edward's Place here. Um, and then there's some other duplex units and a couple of single family homes. Every property that you see um on Edward's Place is owned, is owned by the uh, the university. I did go through and click on each lot and, and look at the ownership. So these are all owned uh by the university and are, you know, these are occupied as residential units. Um, to our west, um, Mr. Cohen asked the question if this was a residential use on twenty seven and it is, this is half of a duplex here. So you can kind of see the context, um, you know, kind of squarely being in, you know, within the university and surrounded by university uses. Uh, and again, really intended to function um for university students as, as we've discussed.
Can I ask, is, is just for a second, if this, if in sometime in the future, for any reason, this property is sold. Would this, would this go back to the university or could it be sold on the open market?
No, it, it's, it's currently owned by the Habad is the owner.
But if it, if Habad chooses to sell it, does it have, does it uh, is um?
Is there, is there a right to a first refusal or something like that to go back to the university there, there? If that's the question, no, there's not.
Okay, alright, that's fine, thank you.
And should this be exhibit A two?
Yeah, sorry about that, Karen.
No problem.
Sure. Okay, so I'm going to stop sharing this just so we can all see each other again. So um I, I think on that note, uh, you know, really talking about any potential detrimental effects. Uh, I think that, you know, they're fairly minimal, given the context of the area, the, the surrounding uses that we have. Again, this use is functioning here uh for some time, no issues that we're aware of uh in terms of any complaints. So uh we don't really see too many, you know, potential detrimental effects. As far as, as conditions, um, we feel pretty strongly that the proposed development plan here, the expansion of, of the structure goes. A, a long way into help limiting these impacts, moving much of the activity inside the building. Um, you know, this is really a consideration for the board in, in terms of any conditions that you feel would be reasonable to. You know, really ameliorate any of those detrimental, potential detrimental effects um in that regard. And finally, on balance, the fourth part of the test, I, I think based on the existence of, of this facility today. And how the development plan helps the site function better for the use, really this community function that it serves, as we've talked about. We feel the public welfare benefits here far outweigh any of the potential detriments. Um, you know, given the level of activity in the area and the fact that we'll really have primarily foot and bicycle traffic to the site. We feel that the impacts are fairly limited. So on balance, I think that the public welfare benefit would far outweigh any um detrimental impacts. In terms of the um, as we talked about, I'm sorry, um, in terms of the FAR variance. Again, this is a little bit lesser of a legal standard here. We're using the standards under the Coventry Square V Westwood case. Uh, and that was as outlined by the court in the Randolph Town Center case. Really, the focus here is on whether the site can accommodate the problems associated with the increase in floor ratio. And does it remain suitable for the use proposed? And on, on the negative, the, what are the potential impacts of that increase on surrounding properties? And then really reconciling the imposition of that FAR standard in the first place. So in terms of the positive criteria benefit, I think there are uh purposes of the municipal land use law that are promoted here. Uh, first is A, the general welfare, also purpose I to promote a desirable visual environment. Uh, purpose J to promote the conservation of um the environment. And then also M to the more efficient use of land. So the grain of the NFAR variance here, uh as we've talked about, allows for the increase in inside space for the Habad. Uh, something that will allow activities that are currently happening outside to, to be brought inside. This will benefit the surrounding properties and, and help reduce potential impacts. There's also a visual benefit, I think, to the application uh in that the temporary tents will be removed in favor of. A, a well-designed indoor and outdoor space that will make for a more organized appearance of the site and the use. And as I talked about oddly, you know, even with the expansion here um into adjacent seventeen Edwards Place. And the expansion of the structure, we're still reducing the impervious coverage on the site by about twelve percent. So there is a, a benefit there uh in terms of a reduction in runoff and an increase in, in uh, you know, water getting into the ground. So that'll be a benefit to the environment. And as to the efficient use of land, I think, you know, the Habad is well established and, and what is really a very ideal location to serve students. And I think it makes sense to maintain that current location and really permit expansion of the structure. Uh, make use of the existing improvements uh and, and the location, you know, to continue to serve that function. In terms of any um potential negative impact of the FAR increase to surrounding properties. Uh, the additional space that is to be constructed is all at the rear of the building. So it really limits visibility from the street. Um, and from most of the surrounding properties. Uh, so we're, we're really addressing it with, with how we're proposing the addition and where. It's really going to reduce or limit the potential for visual impact. Here as well, with the increase in floor, again, it's, it's not going to come with the typical uh impacts that we would have from an increase in floor. And the way of, you know, increased traffic, things like that. As we talked about, everybody's coming to the site on, on, you know, foot or by bicycle. So we're not going to have any increased traffic or any parking issues uh as a result of the increase in the FAR. And then in, in terms of the intent and purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance, obviously the intent here is to control the mass and coverage of, of the lot. To also better regulate the appearance of structures uh in relation to available land. As we discussed, the, the addition is entirely in the rear of the building. Uh, so the appearance of the building from the street is largely going to remain the same. Um, again, we're reducing coverage by about twelve percent. So there is a net benefit uh in terms of the developed appearance of the site. Uh, as well as the stormwater. So I think overall, given this hybrid use and the intended function of the site, particularly in the context of surrounding uses. Uh, I believe the, the increase in FAR can be reconciled with the intent of the standard in this case. You know, largely because this is a, an R four zone, it, it's not really designed to address a use like this. So I think it's, it's really about, you know, coming up with an appropriate balance here to, you know, to allow the Habad to continue to serve that function. And, you know, really that, that FAR increase. So I, I think we can reconcile it successfully. Uh, based on the use and the existence of that use at, at this, you know, at this site. Um, just moving on to the bulk variances. Some terms of the rear inside yard setbacks, I think these do qualify under the C two analysis where the benefits outweigh the detriments. Uh, the purpose A to promote the general welfare, uh I desirable visual environment and M also the efficient use of land. So reduction of the rear yard setback, uh again, for allows for the addition of the space that gets certain functions occurring outside in temporary tents today. To be held inside. I think the reduction of the side yard setback really uh provides the ability to, to provide that stare down from the deck. This provides another means of ingress and egress um for the building. And I think given the nature of the use and functions uh that happen there, that additional means of access, ingress and egress is an important safety function. And then expansion at the current location, as I said, also represents a more efficient use of land. I think, given the uses that we have at the rear of the property, um, this is again, the university parking lot kind of wraps around the back here. There's also a, a pretty substantial um stone structure. I, I don't think it's used as a garage because it doesn't have garage doors. But um it is, it is used by the university for some function. So it's a, a substantial stone, two-story structure. Um, with a pitch roof on the back that is pretty close to the property line in the rear. And it's actually um a little farther west than where the addition would be. So when you think about the potential impact on the negative criteria in particular. The decrease of that setback on the rear and also to the side is really occurring uh only to the parking lot and to an existing structure. That appears to just be used for storage. So I think um based on that, there shouldn't be any substantial impact to that adjacent property. Which again, is just a parking lot and, and a, essentially a, a maintenance structure, I, I believe. So there shouldn't be any substantial impact in the reductions on, on either side. There's also a fence that separates the parking lot on the east side of the lot. Uh, from this lot. So there is some separation and screening that's provided uh with that reduction of setback. Obviously, the intent of the setbacks, while it's not expressly discussed in the master plan, is to address adequate light or an open space. I think, given the particular uses that we have, or use rather, um, the parking lot surrounding this. Uh, I believe that intent is met. It's not as though uh it's coming at the expense of a structure that's adjacent. Where that reduction might, might have some substantial impact. So I think uh here, the benefit of granting the relief outweighs any potential, potential detriment. Uh, the impervious coverage variance, uh I think is also qualifies under the C two analysis where the benefits outweigh the detriments. It's really the same purposes that we discussed for the D four FAR variance. And most importantly, we're reducing previous coverage over what exists today. We still exceed the standard. Uh, but there isn't that reduction of about twelve percent uh that we think is beneficial. And I think given that reduction. And given the existing condition that there shouldn't be any substantial impact to surrounding properties as a result. Uh, to the, to the contrary, it'll be an improvement. And then likewise, on the intent of that standard. The, the reduction's going to bring it closer to conformance with, with the residential standard that we have now. And then finally, the driveway setback uh on the west side, I think this one actually qualifies under the C one uh analysis. Where there's uh practical difficulty created by the positioning of the existing dwelling. It really leaves limited room on that west side for a driveway. Um, so it, it does create a practical difficulty and will qualify uh under the hardship criteria. Um, so really the reduction here just allows us to have adequate room to park a vehi- vehicle or two on that west side. As, as Mr. Bridger had indicated, we do have uh parking ability for two cars on each sides, uh, each side of the driveway. And in terms of any um potential impact here, obviously, the, the most potential impact is to that residential use to the west. Uh, there is presently a stone driveway on that side. It kind of varies in width and meanders. Uh, so we're not introducing a, a new parking area. There is one that exists there today. Uh, we are bringing it slightly closer to that property line. Um, but I would say that locating it closer based on the function today shouldn't have any substantial impact. And I think, given that uh practical difficulty in the width between the property line and the structure. Uh, I think the intent of providing that, that separation to the property line is still met. Uh, again, given that the, the driveway exists today and that the additional encroachment is relatively minor um on that regard. With that, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have in the way of direct. I'm happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Okay. Board members, any questions? Please, Michael.
You started off, um, you introduced the inherent beneficial use. Um, and you mentioned a couple uh properties that are function not exactly like this. But you mentioned um the Jewish Center on two O six, the Jewish Center um on twenty seven.
Yep.
And those, those were two? And those, those were two? What about the Center for Jewish Life right on campus?
Oh, that one I missed.
Yeah, okay. And isn't it also a way, well, actually, it's not in your area. But there's supposedly, from what I saw on the website, say, a meal plan that this property dovetails off with the meal plan at, at the Center for Jewish Life. It's a very, very good website, very informative.
Sorry, I think Mr. Stein had a question. He was, you have to unmute Mr. Stein.
Mr. Stein, unmute.
George, you're muted.
Sorry, can you hear me now?
We can hear you, yep.
Yes, okay, a couple of questions. One is the residential uses.
Speak a little louder, please.
Yeah, the, the university owning the houses that are used residentially. Do they rent them out or are they sell it to professors? How, do you know how that works?
I do not, Mr. Stein. I'm, I'm not familiar with the arrangements that are made with the occupants of those dwellings.
Okay, the second question has to do with, if there is a sale and it's not to an organization like Habad. Does the evaporation of the inherent beneficial use invalidate any variances?
Yeah, that's an interesting question. I mean, we, we are here asking for use variance for a specific use. So if someone else wanted to come in and use this particular facility for some use other than a Habad. I would think that they would have to return to the board and, and make those arguments again.
In our 2006 approval, there were several variances that were given that do not run with the land. So, so basically, if, if this was sold as a single-family house, let's say, in the future. And, or some use other than a religious institution that would be similar to this, they would have to come back in.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
Thank you.
I compliment you in getting rid of those tents. I drive by there often on my bike. I always thought they were party tents. I had no idea that they were part of the Habad. Oh, you, you didn't mention, I mean, you acknowledge that Jewish Center for Student Life. But what is the relationship between your organization and that organization?
Would have to have Rabbi Webb address that one.
So it's, it's a good question. Julie Roth, who is the director of the Center for Jewish Life, Rabbi there. And I both serve as chaplains in the Office of Religious Life. So Princeton University has sort of like a, in Murray Dodge Hall, they have an Office of Religious Life, which is directed by Alison Boden. And we both serve as the Jewish chaplains. She's the senior Jewish chaplain, the junior Jewish chaplain. But we, we meet regularly. We both have different functions. We're doing different things on the campus, but we keep each other abreast of what we're doing. And to the extent that we can work together, we do. Just one example is actually during COVID, the, the, there's a daily, a Thrice Daily service at the Center for Jewish Life. Which has been in operation for many years. But during COVID, the university told them that they were not permitted to have any student, any person that is not in the Princeton testing plan. Actually enter into the building, which means that anybody who lives in the town of Princeton would not be able to walk in. And that means that, you know, if you, even if you're a professor, and certainly if you're not a professor, you would not be able to say Kaddish or do any of the of the religious functions, which you might need to do. So for the entire fall semester, we actually hosted the service in the tents. Or in the, in the, in our backyard, because our building is not owned by the university and the university therefore, through their COVID resumption committee, sorry, this is a long answer. Gave, gave us permission to, to operate. So the, so the Center for Jewish Life service was Thrice Daily in our backyard. And then we, it now moves to now, so and it's going to come back to their lawn, to the Center for Jewish Life lawn, actually, I believe, this weekend. So it's just one example of.
So do you serve a different population of Jewish students?
Yes and no. So the, the, there are, there are some students who definitely find for one or for the other. Judaism on, on a college campus is a little bit different than Judaism in the world. I suspect that's true for many things. And that is because the primary motivator for student activity is social and not religious. So there's a small group that has a very religious intent and they are going to navigate to reform, to conservative, to Orthodox. That's where they're going to go come hell or high water. But most people are going to go where their friends go. And so, you know, of the 60 students that are coming this, this Friday night, I'd say maybe 20 of them are Orthodox. 20 of them or 25 of them might be conservative or reform. And, and 15 or so aren't Jewish. But their roommates are, or their boyfriends are, or their girlfriends are, or, you know, so it's a, it, it is, it, it's, there's, depending on the event. You know, if it's a service, it will skew more towards the religious. If it's a social event, it, it just, it really depends.
Thank you very much.
Okay, any other questions? Mr. Pataskeini, do you have any other witnesses?
We, we do not, Mr. Cohen. The only question I think the board has to decide is with regard to the sign, whether you think it's permitted. And if it is, then there's no variance required. If it's not, we need a variance. And I think for all the reasons, Mr. Kyle has already set forth on the record with other bulk variances. I think his testimony would support that unless you want to hear more from Mr. Kyle. But, but that's, I think that's the one decision you have to make prior to entertaining the entire application.
Derek, what do you say about the sign? What's your opinion?
I mean, I think they need a sign. It's clearly more than a house. I mean, that's kind of, when I was looking at this, is it a, what is it? You know, is it a house? Is it a Habad? So it's, it's a hybrid of both, but especially now, I think they, I think the board could grant it. I guess, it's not necessarily a church or a synagogue or, you know, it is a quasi-public building, but it kind of falls in an odd place. So, I mean, I think they've presented reasons to support the granting of the variance.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any of the board have any questions on the sign issue? Okay, if we're done with the presentation, then I'll open this up. And, and the board has no other questions, I'll open this up to the public. Claudia, do you have anybody, any audience, audience who would like to speak to this?
Not as of yet. Oh, wait a minute, somebody just raised their hand. One sec. Mr. Chapman, you're on.
You're muted.
And we can't see you.
There you go.
Unmuted.
Now you, now we can hear you.
But we can't see you, but we can hear you. See you.
We do that too.
Mr. Chapman, do you swear affirm any testimony you give this evening will be truthful?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, I just want to take a moment and introduce myself. Tom Chapman. I live at 14 Alexander Street, which is very near the Habad. I'm also representing the Mercer Historic District and Stedman Alley Association. Both of which have been notified of, of not only this meeting, but all the meetings that preceded it. And I just may make a brief comment that I'm very impressed with the way this whole process has been handled this evening. And earlier by the, yeah, the Office of Historic Preservation and the Preservation Commission. I think everything has been handled quite excellently. I think the discussion tonight, especially by the presentation by Mr. Kyle about size. Was very informative, constructive, and I think answered some of the questions that I have heard from people who live very close to the Habad in our part of the historic district. And I've found them to be very satisfactory. So I just wanted to go on record with that and wish the Habad and and everybody associated with it all the best.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chapman.
You're welcome.
Claudia, is there anyone else? Yep, there is. Lauren Hoffman.
Hi, yes, my name is.
Will just swear you in. Lauren Hoffman, do you swear affirm any testimony you give this evening will be truthful?
I do, yes.
Thank you.
My, my first time. I am Lauren. I'm an alumna of Princeton University. I was very involved in the Habad on campus while I was a student. And worked very closely with Atan and Gitie on the student board. And I'm here just really as a friend and supporter of this plan for updating the building. Which they have been talking and, and dreaming about since before my freshman year. And yeah, just in, in brief, wanted to share that Habad was by far the most meaningful student organization and community. I was a part of on campus, was one of the primary sources of deep friendships that are extremely important in my life, you know, through today. And that I know Atan and Gitie are among the most like powerful community builders. Strongest student supporters and tasteful and thoughtful users of space anywhere. And so I can, yeah, could not more strongly endorse this, this plan. And what it will empower them to do for students going forward for, you know, the next 15, 20 years of their organization on campus and beyond.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else like to speak on this property?
There is no one else.
Okay, that's it then. I will now close the public portion of the hearing and go to the board. Do you, Mr. Spadacini, do you want to make a closing remark, comment?
I appreciate that, Mr. Cohen. I think I've learned after these years when to shut up and I'm going to choose to shut up right now. How's that sound?
Very powerful words, right? Okay, so I'd like to open this up to the board and for comments, questions or a motion. Well, hearing nothing, I'll throw my two cents worth in here. I, I've only, only heard, I've never been to the Habad house here. I've been to other Habad houses. I had not been to this one. I've heard good things about it, only good things about it, quite frankly. And I like what they're going to do. And I would, I would support approval of this. We do have an issue of the previous approval, which made certain elements of this not run with land. So I think some of these changes, if this were to change use. May, may require us or may suggest to us that, that some of the improvements, specifically the, the big addition on the back is what I'm speaking to. Not, not run with the, not run with the land. That, that may be problematic and I'm up for discussion on that. But yeah, again, in our 2006 resolution, there were, there was an issue with the kitchen. Again, the second kitchen not running with the land. And so I'd like to get board comments on that.
Steve, I, I think that.
Little louder, please.
Yeah, I, I'm agreeing with you. I think that if the use changes. Certain parts of this, you'd have to come back to the, the zoning board.
Yeah.
Yeah, if it's. Or demolition.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think that's fair, given what they want to do. And, and if this went, for instance, if it was sold as a single-family house. Or, or again, try to be, or converted to a duplex or something, whatever. Okay, but that's. Okay, I, I agree with that, George.
But yeah, I, just one question, but if the use were to continue and now instead it's sold to a different religious organization. Then why would it not run with the land? I mean, it seems to me that.
We made that, we made that.
But I know that, but, but I mean.
That.
I, I would quest, I have to question the, you know, I understand that the prior approval talked about two full kitchens within the one family dwelling will not run with the land. But this has changed now. And now you have two dwellings that are being consolidated. And I just, I, I think as long as it is a use that meets the criteria, meaning that it's, you know, basically this is a hybrid where part of it is used for the dwelling. Part of it is used for gatherings, religious observances, Sabbath meals. So if another religious organization said, okay, well, we kind of do the same thing. We serve a different religious community on campus. I don't know how it wouldn't run with the land.
No, I, I agree with you. I agree, I agree with that. But in our 2006 approval, we made mention to the kitchen, which in a sense was specific to Orthodox Judaism, let's say. And so, but I had no problem, you know, maintaining, you know, the, the approvals we've given and the variance we've given. If this goes to a similar use.
Did you want to comment on that, Dino, or?
I, I, I would. So I think we're all saying the same thing. I, I just want to make sure that, that it gets into the resolution of what we're saying. And I'm sure Karen will, will do an excellent job that she usually does, but it's going to be the normal process. If, if someone's going to come in to see Mr. Bridger or, or his successor down the road. Say, hey, I want to do something else. Well, he's going to say, then you're going to have to go back to the board. And, and if they come in and say, okay, we're pretty much going to use it exactly as the Habad has used it. But we're a different religious organization, et cetera, then, then you get to use it. So I, I think we're all saying the same thing. And I agree with you, Mr. Stein and Mr. Cohen, that somebody comes back and says, hey, I want to use it exactly as is for a single-family home. You know, I'm sure Derek's going to say, well, you can't have two kitchens, you know, I, I, I get that. So it's going to be a judgment call like anything else. Hate to put the pressure on you, Derek, but I don't see any way around it. I mean, they generally start with you when they come in, I would think, right? Whoever the end user is. So I don't think this would really work any differently than, than any other type of situation. But I certainly understand your concerns. I think we're, so I think.
Well, as Kathy and I testified, this is a mixed-use building. It has an assembly use. It has a residential use and it has a, I guess, a business use. Kathy, is that what you said? Maybe Kathy's not here anymore. No, you're there. You're muted, but, so it had several uses. So again, if those uses were not clearly identified with a new user, then, then I'm sure our zoning officer would.
I don't disagree. I don't disagree.
Okay. All right. Okay, does anybody have any, any other board members have any questions or would someone like to make a motion?
Oh, one question as part of the motion. Does the board feel it qualifies for a sign under, I'm looking at Derek's memo. Section seventeen eight three six
Is a sign permitted or is it
Yes, or do you need a variance?
Derek?
I mean, it's, it's kind of a gray area. It is a place of worship, but it's a house too. So that's why if it was just a Habad or synagogue, I would say it's the signs permitted, or if it was just a church. But the hybrid nature of it, you know, I think it needs a variance. So I think they presented. If, if it was a church, they could get eighteen square feet or sixteen square feet and they're asking for six. So it's a reasonable request and they've given proofs to support the granting of that variance.
Okay.
What would the sign say?
I believe Aitain Kathy would identify the Habad is what I believe it would do, correct?
Correct. It would say Habad House. And I think we already agreed that we would show the sign to Elizabeth before, before it was posted.
Correct.
There's a very specific requirement about the, the size of the logo can be in relation to the text. So HPC is asked to, if you approve the sign and the size of it, to review the text of what goes on the sign in the future before it's finalized. So it will be reviewed by HPC.
Okay.
Also, there are conditions proposed by
Well, Michael, Michael still has a comment.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
You're muted.
Michael, you're muted.
So I, just a brief comment. I think it's too much. So I'll be voting against it and I'll just leave it there. It's a good organization. I've researched it. I've watched videos on it and everything. That's my position.
The sign's too much or the entire application is too much?
The size is too much, the capacity is too much. People will still go outside. You make it sound like everybody's now going to be inside. It's, it's still a R4 zone. We don't know what the university is going to do with that parking lot. But I can leave it. I just think it's too much. I think it's grown in the last ten years and it will keep growing because it's a good organization. But it's, it's a subjective thing, but what is enough enough?
Okay.
A couple of questions to follow up with that. At the beginning of the meeting, I wasn't sure if you had a full quorum. Because obviously, as you know, we need five votes. I, I would like to just hear from all members if, if, I hope you'll appease me with that request.
I think we have a full board tonight, Dino. We do have seven members.
Yeah, I just missed it at the beginning, Karen, when, when everyone was, when they were doing the attendance roll.
Claudia, I mean, I'm not discounting. We have seven members here tonight.
We have seven members, yes.
Okay, so we do have the, we have a full complement tonight.
Do we want to just ask members to voice their opinion? Is that, is that a problem?
I mean, it wouldn't, well, I guess my question for you, Dino, is we have seven members tonight. If you're hearing, if you're saying you want a sense of the board because you might withdraw the application, I mean, it's not going to change. We have seven tonight. It's not like we have five.
No, no, I understand. But I, again, I wasn't sure if you had six or, I just wasn't sure. So I appreciate that. But I would like to get a sense of everyone's thoughts about the application, if that'd be possible.
Don't you sort of get that when we vote?
I'm sorry?
Don't you sort of get that when we vote?
Yeah, I certainly will at that point in time. I think you know what the issue is.
Well, from my standpoint, I support it and I, I would make a motion if we approve it, but I can't spell out all the specifics that have to go into that.
No, no, I understand, Mr. Schreiber, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay.
I have a question about the, the fan equipment. Is that just, there, there's some visual screening around that? Is any additional acoustic screening anticipated or needed?
So, so what we will do is we will make sure that we comply with, with state regulations on that, Ms. Chen. And I believe Ms. Kim, Kathy had a conversation about that today. There'll probably be some additional screening, I think, but I don't want to speak for them because I wasn't part of that conversation. So we'll make sure that we comply with, with any noise requirements, absolutely.
You willing to have that as a condition of approval or?
Sure, you absolutely can. I think, I think we have to anyway, but yeah, you can
Okay. Let's just sort of go around here. George, you want to make comments on this?
Yeah, I basically support the the proposal and the sign variance.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, Nick?
I would support the variants for the same reasons that, you know, were outlined and discussed.
Okay, is Jim still here?
Down here.
Oh, sorry. You're right, blow me then.
Yeah, I generally support it. I think my question really is, is just trying to, I don't expand it too far, but to understand, so if this property goes up for sale, understanding how does that, I'm just concerned that it's going to fall into someone's, someone's going to buy it and, and not and not use it for the same use. And then how is that, how is that validated? That it's not sold to someone that's going to, that's going to use it for something else?
Well, right now, right now, if it's approved, it's, it's got, it's got very, it's a multi-use building owned by, for religious purposes. It's got an assembly use, a residential use and a business use. If it's changed to a single family residential or a duplex, I mean, there's no, if it was just sold and nothing was requested of the building department, then I don't know how that would, how the universe, or how the, how we would know it's changed. I guess, I guess it's a very significant organization in relationship to the university. If it was going to move or they were going to sell, I have to believe that we would know about it. But there's, we could put a provision in there that if the property is going to be sold, that they let the university, let the borough or the municipality know that they're in the process of selling it and notify us as to the intention of the new owners.
Yes, that would make me more comfortable.
Okay.
If there was something that would be triggered upon, upon its sale or its
Yeah, they would, they would have to notice the, the municipality.
Municipality, yes. That would make me much more comfortable because I can see if it got into the wrong, if someone else bought it and didn't make any changes, they just operated it in its current, in its new capacity. Then, you know, I don't know how it would be, you know, jurisdiction would be enforced at that point, so.
I'm going to correct one item that I have stated on the record. There is a right of first refusal back to the university on this property. I'm not sure what the length is, if it's in perpetuity, but there, there is at least a temporary, and I can try and get Aitain, are you still there? There you are. Do you, can you give me the specifics of the right of first refusal in terms of length of time or?
Yeah, actually, it's, it's forty-five years.
Oh, that's a long time. Okay.
Not gone away that fast. And the, the, yeah, there was a condition of their sales to us was that we would do that. And since we, I mean, it really goes to the heart of this whole proposal. We're not doing this other real estate play. If we were, it wouldn't be here, I promise. They, the, so, so yeah, we, we're doing this for the community and we understand that if we, you know, then it would be, they're, we would want them really to be thinking anyways.
Sure. I, I, I hope that that gives everyone a little bit more comfort level. Certainly, I mean, forty-five years is a long time. Probably won't be you then addressing this will be your successor, I assume. But when someone comes in, so I hope that gives everyone a little bit more of a comfort level.
Jim, hearing that, does that change your concern? Do you still want that condition?
Are you asking me?
I'm asking Jim Davidge because he suggested it. So, but anybody.
I, I think we should get noticed if it's going to get sold.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, um, I mean, I think I'm the only one that didn't comment. I, I share Michael's concern that this is, is, is very big, but I think the benefit to the, to the community, to the university community is significant. And I haven't heard, and the university didn't comment negatively about it. And given its location, you know, bordered by the, it sits surrounded by university properties and the parking lot. I think I, I support this.
Thank you. And just, just to follow up on that, Historic Preservation, as you know, normally there is no notice unless there's demolition involved in this. We noticed at the March, for the March Historic Preservation Meeting as well as obviously this meeting this evening. So
Thank you.
An issue.
Okay, so now we're back to someone in the board making a motion.
I think I did that. I made the motion without the specifics. So I so moved.
All right. So let me suggest then, Steve, that we could add to your motion that the applicant would comply with the conditions and recommendations in the Bridger per se memo and the HPC memo. Is that, Dino, is that acceptable?
That is, absolutely.
Okay, so I suggest we add that to your motion.
Steve, would you accept as a friendly amendment, the notice that we, that the zoning board get notice of, of any pending sale?
Yes.
Yeah, oh yeah. I think that's important. Yeah, we did talk, yes. Yes, we want, that has to be in the, in the resolution. Okay, so do we have a second for this?
I will second.
Okay. Any comment on the motion? Claudia?
Okay, Mr. Davich?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
No.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Vavani?
Yes.
Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Oh, yeah, yes, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The board greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. See you soon.
Thank you very much.
Nice presentation. Okay, we have one remaining case, but it is ten thirty-four. And I just want to see if the board is comfortable hearing that case tonight or do we want it carried? I personally will stay. I'm not, I, I would rather get it over with tonight. What are the other, what do you, what do you choose to do?
It's okay with me to keep going. I, I thought Derek said we weren't doing the third case.
No, there was a four cases actually, so.
The one wasn't on the, the hillside one wasn't listed on the agenda.
Made to the agenda.
It was, they noticed towards it.
What is, what is next month's docket look like? Is it fairly full?
The next foreseeable future is busy.
Okay.
I just want to note that for the applicant, there is, after ten thirty, there's an additional surcharge for the court reporter. So just so you know that, that's going to be an additional fee. And I'm, I'm trying to find out what the fee is, but I don't have it handy. I don't know if Lisa Bradley can has any information about that. Lisa?
I'm sorry, I'm just having trouble with my audio today.
Oh, no worries. Thank you. We were just trying to, we know that the court reporter's fee increases after ten thirty. We're just wondering if we, we can't find the fee. We want to advise the applicant before they proceed it. So.
I don't know the fee. I, I don't have that information. Sorry about that.
No, thank you.
Well, I guess we should ask Mr. Ruggiero if he is acceptable to this. I, I don't know. I'm sorry. We don't, we don't know what it is, but okay, let's say, so we can continue.
We can't hear, Mr. Ruggieri, we can't hear you.
You gotta
Oh, sorry.
Okay, so you'd like to continue?
Yes, I said, yeah, sure.
Well, I'll just indicate the noticing is fine and the board has jurisdiction.
Okay, Derek, would you like to read your memo? Well, excuse me, Michael, are you comfortable continuing on?
Yes, it's okay with me.
Okay, good. All right, Derek, can you read your memo?
Yes, sir. The applicant's Lionel Ruggieri and Berka Tezkan Ruggieri, the owner applicants of not three oh four Ewing Street are seeking a deep or, or area ratio variance for a construction of a short carport in a storage shed in exception to required FAR. Additional bulk variances are also required for side yard setbacks for both structures. Properties located in the R8 zone in the former Princeton Township. Existing single family use is permitted as a right subject. Lot is not complying with respect to the required eighty-five hundred square foot lot area. The existing lot is six thousand eight hundred sixty-nine square feet. Some of you may recall that variance was granted for this property back in two thousand sixteen. Because of the insufficient lot area, the applicant is proposing to construct a sixteen by twenty carport in an eight by twelve shed on the Linden Lane elevation of the subject property. The addition of the carport in the shed require an FAR variance as pos, as follows the permitted FAR is thirty-five point seven. It's a proportional FAR due to the substandard lot. The existing is right at that thirty-five point seven and the proposed FAR would be forty-one point eight. I want to note that this property has two front streets. It has two front yards because it has two frontages. So if it didn't have that frontage and it was a rear yard, it would be able to take advantage of it. Three hundred square foot definite exemption for FAR for garages and carports when they are located behind the rearmost section of the property. But again, this property has two front yards, so there is no rear yard. There's nowhere to be behind the house. So they, they don't get that, that benefit. And also, the carport needs a front yard setback. The prevailing front yard setback is thirty-seven and a half. The existing is twenty-five point six feet, twenty-five and a half feet, excuse me, and the side yard setback is requirement is eight and the existing is six feet, six inches. The shed requirement, the front yard setback is thirty-seven and a half. The proposed setback of the shed will be two feet, six inches. The side yard setback is eight feet and the proposed side yard setback is three inches. They have requested a, a C1 consideration for this variance. And that's a quick synopsis. If you have any questions, be glad to answer.
I have a question. I have a question. What if the, what if the shed were a temporary structure? What would that do?
I don't know. I don't consider sheds temporary. It's not like a wheelbarrow. You can pick it up and move it, you know. I mean, side hundred square feet. I, I don't consider them temporary.
Okay, all right, all right. Okay, um, let's continue on. Mr. Ruggieri, would you like to discuss this? Tell us what you want to do and why you want to do it.
Mr. Ruggieri, before you begin, we just need to swear you in. Do you swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes.
Thank you.
Right, so just a quick introduction. So we, we're family, we have two kids, and we acquired this property three years ago. It was a new properties. And like I said, the specification is having two front yard, because we are between Ewing Street and Linden. So the thing, the thing, we are the first owner of that house, so now we realize the driveway is not practical in the way that we cannot use in daily, because also it's take the, the backyard, well, the kind of the garden area, but in, there is no value to park our car, and the difficulty of that driveway, that our car are technically parked on Ewing Street all the time as in the street, because we don't have any driveway on Ewing Street. So that's where the, our first concern, I know, concern is just, we, so the shed that we envision is, is kind of a temporary, well, it's a, it's a standard garden shed. We want to move some stuff out of the garage so that we can park the first, the first car, and have the benefit of the, of the kind of a protection. And then, and then that car cover on the Linden side will be also the protection for the, for the, for the second car, so that we'll have more opportunity to park our car away from Ewing Street, and, and use kind of these driveway with the benefit of protection, and eventually create kind of, if we acquire electric cars, we have the possibility to reach out those cars. So that's because of the specification of the property having two front yard, that, that's where the, we feel the, the, well, the, the problem. So that, that introduction, so the, the, so we want to do the, the field as, as an improvement as well for the property. The, the shed will be using high-quality material and design, and the same as a carport, and it's going to be custom-sized to the property to fit in. And that, that, that will, that will have no benefit, but I, I think, yeah, so the, it will fit in in the way that the, in, in the, in the area where we are, the, the neighbors on the right, on the left, has shed in the exact same position, the corner front on the Linden side. And that's kind of, kind of common aspect of this, of this neighborhood. And on, also on the Linden side, that kind of carport-style house, so that's where we, and we feel with how the property extension will be aligned with those property on the same block area. And that, I think that's correspond for the kind of, not really negative aspect in the way we then will blend it into the, that number, but I think Tony is also the, the architect who will maybe give probably also technical background, so.
Um, can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Could we get your name first, please?
Yes, I'm sorry. I, I'm, had to use my tablet tonight, and I didn't figure out how to sign incorrectly. My name is Anthony La Placa. I'm a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey, and I've been working with the Ruggeris on the application for their, their carport and their variance.
Thank you. And we just need to swear in. Do you swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes.
Thank you.
So just to, to, I guess, to reiterate what Lionel spoke of, you know, there was a desire to utilize their, their yard in a way to improve the situation that they have. It's, you know, a property on a lot that has two front yards, which makes their parking situation and their access to their property difficult. It, the block on Ewing Street where, where they're located is unusual in that, that particular block is, has front yards on both Ewing and Linden Lane, so it's not a typical situation. And as Derek mentioned, it precludes them from getting the credit for the garage credit that is typically available to, to homes in that zone. So that's one of the negative impacts that's become a part of their FAR calculation. They also would like to do the shed, which is something that typically in the neighborhood, people have sheds all along the street to enhance their storage, and typically, I would guess that they, they likely don't come for variances or permits, but I think Mr. Ruggieri and his wife would like to make sure that they go through the process in the appropriate manner and get the appropriate approvals. The shed would not be put onto a permanent foundation, but it would be located on a, just a gravel pad, so that it, it, in essence, is similar to many of the other sort of low-scale types of structures on the property, on the properties and the neighbors. So the, the design of, that's been presented is one that is trying to be minimal in its appearance and mass, so that it is of least impact to visually in the neighborhood, made out of high-quality materials. The, probably the most visible part would be the underside of, of the carport, which is intended to be of a natural finished wood paneling, so that it would have a, an attractive finish, and a high-quality finish. And the shed would be constructed in a custom fashion to, to be compatible with, with that sort of design. So as, as was, I said before, and I provided a short narrative, there, there are many houses on the street that, that encroach on the side yards in similar fashions, and, and sheds that, that are along property lines that would be of a similar nature that the Ruggeris are, are asking for. So we do not think it's, would be a detriment, and it would be an enhancement to, to their ability to live comfortably and, and shelter their, their cars and utilize their, their property in, in an enhanced way in the neighborhood.
Thank you. I was just looking at an aerial photograph of this on Google Earth, so. Okay, do you have any other witnesses, Mr. Ruggieri? Okay, any questions of the applicants by the board? Okay, why, just as, I'm curious, you, your, the carports located eight feet from the house, and the sheds in front of that, was there any discussion about moving the shed further back or integrating it with the carport or something?
Well, I think that the, I think that we thought that the, the shed by being separate from the carport would, would keep the carport from being more of an enclosed structure, and, and as it being an open structure, it would be less of an encumbrance visually, being that it's along the perimeter of a fence, and for the most part, hidden by, by the types, by the fencing that is typical and is, is around the property. So I think that you would really not see the, the, the shed in any substantive way. There would just be a very small portion of it that would kind of peek over to the fence, whereby if you've moved it to the carport, it would be, it would be potentially more visible and, and a more substantial structure.
So it lines up, it's pretty much just across the fence line from the neighborhood shed.
Yeah, yeah, it's which is, which is pretty typical for the neighborhood, that small houses with people who need extra storage.
It's a tough lot.
Yeah.
Okay, any other board questions of the applicant? Claudia is, will open this up to the public at this point. Claudia, is there anybody in the audience who wants to speak to this?
There are no hands raised.
Okay, all right, we'll close the public portion, and Mr. Ruggieri, do you want to say anything before we go into executive session?
Um, no, I'm good.
Okay, very good. Okay. Do any of the board members have any questions, comments, or would someone like to make a motion?
I, I have a comment, which is because this is a corner lot.
A little louder, George.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes, I'm sorry. Because this is a corner lot, and they therefore don't get the credit for the, for a garage behind the face. I'm inclined to.
I can't hear you, George.
You cannot hear me now?
Yeah, now we can hear you. You kind of dropped off there a little bit.
I'm sorry. I'm basically saying that the corner lot geometry obviates them getting a certain type of credit that they otherwise would get, and I therefore am inclined to grant this on those grounds.
Well, this isn't, this isn't really a corner lot. It's a through lot with two front yards. It has no rear yard, so, yeah, I mean, that's, that's the rub here, you know, that's.
Not a corner lot, but the basic geometric configuration.
Yes, yeah.
This is the point to make, and I think that, that's, that's a valid concern.
Yeah, okay. Michael?
Yeah, a question for Derek. You know, sort of regardless of this application, this exception rule, the, sort of the logic behind it, I was wondering, it's, you know, the, a building can, a house can be built to maximum permitted. It can have two garages in, and you still get the exception if you want to put something in the yard?
Yeah, I mean, it's accessory structures and garages. I think the intent was to put garages to incentivize garages, detached garages in, in the backyard, so you didn't see garages in the front, but.
And how, how long has this exception rule been in place?
It's been in place for quite a while. It was taken away, and then it was brought back. It was taken away, and I think probably 2016, and then it was reinstated back in 2018 when they did neighborhood character, and they really focused on garages. The township at one point, it's kind of complicated. The borough always exempted them behind the house, but the township exempted all garages, so we tweaked a lot of FAR upon consolidation, and at this point, it, there is an exception of 300 square feet when it's located, when an accessory structure is located behind the rearmost portion of the house.
And, okay, yeah. And with this application, even if it could use the 300, it would still need a variant. What, isn't it a little short?
It's still 116, 16 square feet over the, the, the max limit of the 35.7%, so.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other comments from the board?
I mean, I, I agree with you, Stephen, that it's certainly, it's a, it's a, it's a difficult lot, and I'd, I'd be, I'd be in favor of approving it. I, I see your point also. You know, I'm sure this architect has looked at the design, but it seems like moving the, the shed up next to or next, either underneath or next to the carport kind of makes a little better sense, and might be a little easier to deal with in the rain versus having to walk out to the, to the end of the property to put your bike away, but, so I'd be inclined to approve it.
Okay. Somebody like to make a motion?
Will be approved.
Okay, second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Uh, any comments on the motion?
Sorry, could we, I couldn't hear who approved it and who seconded it. The names didn't pop up on there.
I moved it.
Jim Davidge, second.
Thank you.
All right, comments on the motion? Okay, Claudia?
Okay, Mr. Davidge?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
No.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Valvanes?
Yes.
Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, well, thank you all. That concludes our cases for this evening. Next month on the 26th. Thank you all for attending.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.
Night.
Good night, Michael.
Night.
Good night all.